I'm looking out for my mom and dad.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for the 12th of January 2007. Welcome to John Favreau Council Chambers here in City Hall, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We invite members of the public to come down and to see our open meetings, and if you want to know what's on our agenda, you can go online to the city's homepage at www.lacity.org to read our agenda 72 hours in advance, or through the city clerk's office, or here in council chambers, and we have council ambassadors in the back, local high school students who are here to assist you in the workings of city council. Each council meeting is broadcast live on Channel 35 and rebroadcast in the evening through our city's cable system, and we also are available through the city's homepage with live streaming video through a webcast at www.lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information about our city departments, your elected officials, and important information for improving the quality of life in your community. Finally, you can listen to our council meetings via audio through Council Phone, a telephone service you can call 213-621-CITY, and you can listen to the proceedings of our committee meetings and our full council. Members of the public are invited to testify here for items that have been agendized for public hearings, or for our general public comment, which is each meeting on items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction. We also invite people to testify remote from Van Nuys City Hall, if that's closer to where you live and we're able to watch you here in chambers and on television. Finally, we meet the first Friday of each month in Van Nuys City Hall in our efforts to bring city council closer to all Angelinos, and I know we're taking the show on the road to the south as well. We'll be in Wilmington later this year, and looking forward to that. I want to thank council members Cardenas, Labonge, and Weston for being here on time. Each Friday, we do presentations honoring members of the Los Angeles community and members of our city family for accomplishments and notable achievements, and so today we have a number of presentations, and I wanted to begin by recognizing Councilmember Labonge. Are you ready with your presentation, or do you want to recognize Councilmember Labonge to give our first presentation, and after that, we'll hear from Mr. Cardenas. Welcome, Mr. Labonge.
Good morning, everybody. Come on up here. You're not good here tonight. I need you home. It's real simple for me. How about it, Captain? How are you? Good job here. I want you to get your parents' names. They're all over this right out there. Ask your parents. Okay. And your phone name. Right there. Good morning, Mr. President, and members, on this Friday in January. What a beautiful week we had in Los Angeles, where it started in summer and it's coming to be winter, and got a little head cold, so please forgive me, but in December, we had a special event that took place. It was the City of Los Angeles. It was a great day. It was 39 degrees, very cold, like today, brisk, and it was a half marathon, the City of Angels Half Marathon, and I thought it would be appropriate that we honor those who created the half marathon for us, because with that, they also gave donations. And Ms. Perry, last night, attended the event. Mr. Garcetti's deputy was there at the event. I myself was there at the event, where Manuel Arts received $10,000, where Logan Street School received $10,000, where Mitchell Treena Street School received $10,000, and my alma mater, because they ran by it, not because I went to that school, but Ivanhoe Elementary at Silver Lake received $10,000. This half marathon started in Travel Town, where 5,000 runners in the brisk morning ran through Griffith Park, six and a half plus miles along the Los Angeles River, over the historic High Period Bridge, through the Silver Lake District along, where many people saw Silver Lake for the first time in their lives, through the historic Echo Park Lake area and the Angelino Heights, all the way down through Temple Bowery, through the Great Second Street Tunnel, which is more, most photographed tunnel in the world. All of it together came up to the half marathon, where people enjoyed it and really had a wonderful running experience, and Pat Conley, the great retired LAPD officer, who was such a mentor for many runners, was there to help lead them away. We also have very special people who did this, and Catherine Gluck, who was with the Grove of Hope, which first came to us by a letter. A letter? When did you send the letter?
June 2005.
In June, just June of 2005, to start the idea, to get the eye going, and also with Kamau, and I want to say it correctly there.
Udriary.
Udriary, who is that engineer at JPL. Let's give JPL a big hand, though, for sharing you with this. His wonderful parents are from France, and they don't understand a thing I'm saying, but they're here because they're in Los Angeles and they're with their son, so I say, "We love you." You know what that means. We love you because your son did such a wonderful thing for Los Angeles. These two people right here created this half marathon, and not only they did it at their cost, they also had money for schools that it ran by, because they got the schools involved. So with that in mind, on behalf of my colleague, Mr. Garcetti, the president of the council, Ms. Perry of the Great 9th District, and Mr. Reyes in the 1st District, we want to present this congratulatory certificate to you, and thank you all, and welcome your parents to the City of Angels, and wish you well, and look forward to next year's half marathon. Let's hear it for him. Right here. We'll go right here, right here. Good job. And right here.
One last one.
Yeah, you can say something real quick. Here we go, here we go. We'll take it in back. We'll take it in back. Okay, real quick.
Thank you so much, City of Los Angeles. Thank you to council members for supporting our cause. Thank you for allowing us to celebrate the diversity of Los Angeles. Thank you.
All right, good. Au revoir.
Merci beaucoup. All right, we'd like to next recognize Councilmember Cardenas, and I'll be joining him for a presentation on National Human Trafficking Awareness Day.
Thank you very much, Council President and members. Yesterday was the National Day on Human Trafficking Awareness, and I want to thank Los Angeles for paying attention to the press conference that we had, that we had tremendous coverage in raising the awareness on human trafficking here in the city and the region of Southern California. That's right, in the 21st century, modern-day slavery does exist, right here in the city, right here around us. But I'm proud to announce that today we have the tools to liberate more victims and lock away more traffickers than ever before. Thanks to the Metropolitan Task Force on Human Trafficking and its innovative training and outreach campaign, we're going to liberate more victims and lock up more traffickers. The traffickers are on notice, ladies and gentlemen, that we in Los Angeles, in this region, are no longer going to be blind, we are no longer going to not recognize them, we are going to make sure that as many people use their eyes and their good hearts to report human trafficking. Human trafficking is a tragedy that occurs when one human being is held against their will by another human being, and that's slavery. They may be put in bondage and be forced to work in slave labor conditions right here among us, and in some cases, they have to endure atrocities even worse than that, such as being forced into prostitution to pay back their captors and to continue to stay alive. That is the situation that we're combating here in Los Angeles with the Metropolitan Task Force on Human Trafficking. For years, we've been working on this, and I'm very proud to say that we've culminated into the most comprehensive system ever built in the United States. I've been told by leaders, U.S. senators, people from the State Department, people from many departments in Washington, that they are proud of what we're doing and admiring the fact that we are taking the lead and showing the rest of the country how to combat this problem. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to ask my colleague, President Garcetti, to come up and say a few words.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Cardenas, and thank you for doing something which I said in yesterday's press conference. I think sometimes in politics, we overuse the phrase, and certainly if Vak is in the room, he would remind us, "Thank you for your leadership," but in this case, we do that often because people are joining a line in a direction, a policy direction, which many have already traveled. Councilmember Tony Cardenas is truly at the front of the line, not just here locally, but nationally on this issue, so when I say "thank you for your leadership" on this issue, I mean that with the deepest sincerity. You are somebody who has been able to work with an amazing group here in Los Angeles, and the Coalition to Obolish Slavery and Trafficking, or CAST, which is really the preeminent group in the United States of America on this issue, and one of the preeminent groups in the world, has shown that Los Angeles can be at the forefront of the solution, and we know unfortunately that we are at the forefront of the problem. I also mentioned yesterday, we benefit from being a truly global city unlike any other, and we see the fruits of an increasingly flat world and the benefits that can come from that. We also see the downside of that, and the dark side of globalization, and what happens when we know that in our midst, we have something that we thought was banished to museums and to history classes, but slavery and trafficking right here in Los Angeles. It's almost so unbelievable that when we talk about it for the first time, people cannot believe it is here, but it is. That's why what the task force and Councilmember Cardenas and CAST have done is so important. And just to share a quick story, after we had our press conference yesterday, and kudos to Councilmember Cardenas and his staff, we had 17 cameras there, just north here of City Hall, 17 cameras, local ethnic press, neighborhood press, as well as citywide and national press, because we're really pushing forward on this campaign. But I went back to my staff meeting, and we were just doing the rounds in my field office of what's happening in different neighborhoods, and somebody said, "Well, we've been getting a lot of calls about a place in a certain area of my district in which there was complaints that maybe some people were having a house of prostitution," and I said, "This is exactly the moment when we need to look at bringing people in and making sure, not only that there's not prostitution going on, but if there is, what are the conditions of that prostitution? Are people living as slaves in our midst, in our neighborhoods, and what can we do? Colleagues, all of us here, and all the city departments, and all Angelinos, can be the eyes and ears of stopping and ending slavery in our midst, and that's what this is really about today, so I want to thank all of our partners at the county, state, and federal levels, and I want to thank Councilmember Cardenas for bringing us together in a way that we will see, and I know we can't speak of our actions, but a motion you'll see later today, we'll speak to that, too."
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm sorry. I must say that a few years ago, as a council member, I witnessed on television an atrocity that was reported accurately, that there were some women, and even little girls, being forced into prostitution to pay off their captors. That's what spurred me to pay attention to this issue, and I want to say that I'm so proud to stand with the people here, who have been working on this issue and who have been committed to this issue for many, many, many years. Some of them prosecutors, some of them not-for-profit organizations to help the victims, some of them to literally hold the hands of the victims and to assure them that they are in a forgiving country, they are in a compassionate country, they are in a part of the world where we will treat them with respect and compassion, and give them the attention and the resources they deserve to hopefully overcome this atrocity and get back to their lives. That is the seriousness of the matter, and that is what the resources that we bring to bear on this issue. So for me to be a councilman and to say that I'm committed to this issue, that's true, but for me to say that I'm proud to just be a small part of these compassionate, well-trained human beings standing behind me, it is my honor to stand with them. Again, this is modern-day slavery right now, today, in our midst, and we are committed to combating this problem, we are committed to making sure that we make a difference. It's important for us to note that not only with compassion can we attack this problem, I want to give you some examples of what we're doing right now, today. On the 15th of January, just next week, 32 billboards will go up with this message, to give awareness to the community and an 800 number, so that people can understand that they can and should get involved to help save these lives and to be a part of this effort. In addition to that, today, I'm going to be introducing a motion to ask every department to go ahead and put these bumper stickers on all the city vehicles, and I'm sure we're going to see positive results from that. There are two main components that this effort is culminating into and kicking off today, this week, and that is an awareness campaign for the community, and in addition to that, a training campaign for our law enforcement. And I just want to say, and I'm sure there'll be other opportunities to notify the community, but the local hotline number is part of this program, and we're rolling it out as we speak, and that's 800-655-4095. That's a number that any person can call if they witness or see any suspicious activity, or they have knowledge that somebody is being held against their wishes. It's important for them to understand that we're here for them, we're making ourselves accessible, and we will be there soon, 24/7, seven days a week, and we will be there for this community and the people who are the least among us. Whether they have documentation or not, we are here for every human being who has been affected by this atrocity. At this time, I'd like to give special recognition to a few folks, but first, I'd like to ask Kay Buck to come forward and say a few words. As I said earlier, I'm learning of this issue, I'm committed to this issue, but the people behind me are experts, and they are giving of themselves 24/7 for this effort, and Kay Buck is one of those individuals, okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Cardenas and Garcetti as well. So appreciate it, and on behalf of the task force, we want to say thank you to our city council for helping us to invest in human resilience, because that's what we're here for. We are here to put away the traffickers, but we're here to help victims get their lives back on track, as our councilman just said. So we're doing a campaign, but I think it's important for all of us to remember that what this is really about is the spirit and dignity of human beings that we can be a part of, and we're fortunate and lucky to be a part of that. So on behalf of the task force, thank you so much for supporting our task force, and we look forward to a long-lasting and very strong partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to ask to come up and say a brief word of introduction, and that's Kyle Jackson, the commanding officer from Robbery/Homicide Division, LAPD.
Certainly, we are appreciative of this acknowledgement today, and the political support that we are receiving, not only here in the city council, but that we're receiving in the county of Los Angeles. We're in a fight. We're in a battle to identify victims of human trafficking, to rescue them, to save them. We're also in a battle to identify traffickers, those suspects who are denying these victims their right to liberty. The Metropolitan Task Force on Human Trafficking brings together individuals from a federal, state, county, and local level, in addition to our community partners, to work on these issues, and we do it with our egos, because we're committed to identifying and rescuing those victims, because human trafficking in the year 2007 is simply unacceptable. So we certainly do appreciate this recognition today, and we will continue to provide this leadership from a task force level to deal with the issue of human trafficking, not only in the city of Los Angeles, but in the county of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, just to recognize that we also have Don Wildy and Carlos Velez here from LAPD as well. Thank you so much for joining us and being part of this effort. Next, I'd like to ask to come forward is Caroline Whitkoff from the United States Attorney General's, excuse me, the United States Attorney General's Office. Oh, she couldn't make it. Trust me, she's with the program, and she's out working. She's working hard. In addition to that, we have Sheila Neville from the Los Angeles Legal Aid Foundation.
I work for the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, and our immigration unit provides representation to trafficking victims in their immigration cases, and when they serve as witnesses in prosecutions against traffickers, and we are just delighted to be part of the task force, and we think that this collaboration is going to result in the identification of many more victims in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Rosendorf would like to say a few words as well. Mr. Rosendorf?
President, it's good to see you up there at the chair. First, I want to thank my colleagues, both President Garcetti and Councilmember Tony Cardenas, and I've been aware of what you've been doing from a leadership position, Tony, since I've been on the council, which is 18, 19 months now, and I want to thank you for your great leadership and bringing awareness to this. Look, slavery exists today. It exists in this country and in other places on the earth. One of the good things that happened yesterday, the House of Representatives talked about minimum wages going from $5.15 to $7.30 in two years. Well, that's an attempt, at least for those that are working out there, to make more than slave wages, and frankly, our minimum wage is a slave wage, okay? $5.15 is a joke. All right, that's story one. Story two, part of the reason we have such human trafficking going on, like we did in El Monte and found them in the sweatshops, is because the path to citizenship in this country is not clear right now. We have 11 to 12 million people here who are living in the shadows. They are potential victims of this slavery. In fact, those who come over in this cattle car mentality with the coyotes and these other groups that bring people in, they're so afraid that if they tell an authority figure that they're in a slavery situation, they'll be sent back to their countries. They're here to make a better living than in the countries they're in. So when we talk about human trafficking, at the same time, we have to talk about our immigration policies, we have to talk about pathways to citizenship, we need to let these people know, especially the combination, the federal government and the policing powers right now, that when we come across human trafficking, slavery of the 2007 moment we're in, that we're not going to hold their status as an immigrant as part of the issue, because if we do, they're never going to come forward. They'll take the beatings for the nickel and dime they make, because they don't want to leave this country. So we have to make sure the immigration authorities are working closely with this human trafficking issue from the standpoint of the humanity of the people, but God bless you, Tony, and Eric, and all of you, for providing this leadership for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. It's important to note that this is just a fraction of the individuals, professionals at every level of government that is supporting this effort. It's important for us to understand ICE was there yesterday, showing their support and their understanding by the letter of the law, what responsibility they have, and what they are willing to do legally and appropriately to protect the victims, whether they be here documented or not. And by the way, human trafficking is occurring in this country, not only with people who are brought to this country, but by American citizens as well, who have been put into bondage. So this is a human trafficking issue. This is not just an American issue. This is an issue of human beings. This is happening around the world, but I'm very proud to say that I am standing with a team of human beings that are actually making a difference and creating the most fortified, the most effective system in which we can tell victims, "Please come forward. We will treat you as a human being, we will treat you with compassion, we will put those traffickers away." We both have prosecutorial efforts going on, we have the police authority here as well, and we also have compassion, where the victims will be treated as human beings, and we will give them the service that they deserve in the face of this atrocity. So with that, I'd like to give this resolution. This resolution to the Los Angeles Metropolitan Task Force on Human Trafficking, we want to thank you and congratulate you for all the wonderful work that you've been doing, and you know, as we told each other yesterday, this is just the beginning. Thank you so much for your efforts, your compassion, your professionalism.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cardenas, and we all appreciate your leadership on this important issue. Ms. Cardenas, do you have a wish to do number two now, or? All right.
Yeah, we'll take a picture in the back in a few minutes.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Jim, Steve, please come forward. At this time, it gives me great pleasure and honor to announce and commend a human being who has been doing work that, quite frankly, society doesn't give the proper value, and that is sanitation. And let your mind wander, yes, at whatever comes to mind, the things that you don't want to deal with, that's what they deal with. For the county of Los Angeles, for close to 10 million people who are affected immediately by it and officially, to serve over 5 million people, Jim Stahl has been the chief engineer for our county sanitation, and who has served 37 years for our county sanitation department. I have had the honor to represent the city of Los Angeles on this board of elected officials that listen to Jim, that ask him questions, and a board of people who respect Jim tremendously for his professionalism, for his wisdom, and also, believe it or not, even though he's responsible for so much of the waste of every kind, and the water quality, and all of these issues, he is, in my opinion, as astute and caring environmentalist as anyone I've ever met. Another reason why it gives me great honor to give this proclamation on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to Jim is because I'm an engineer, not as astute as him, not as experienced as him, but I'm always proud of the fact that the reason why the good things that happen in every society around the world is because we empower engineers to use their minds, to think for us as a society and a community, and they come up with wonderful, wonderful results. As I said earlier, Jim's been charged with handling the waste of over 5 million people. He has a team of people to assist him. Jim is a humble human being, and he knows that he has not done this alone. He has been commended, especially in the last couple of months, since he's announced his retirement, and rightfully so, and he always gives credit to the people around him. I'm proud to stand with Jim Stahl as a leader, as someone who's committed 37 years of his life to grow into being the wonderful human being that he is, the human being and the leader that has provided the leadership that we've so badly needed in this region. As I said earlier, people don't appreciate what Jim has done, because he deals with what society literally casts away and never wants to see again. We're talking about landfills, we're talking about sewers, we're talking about all kinds of things that every society has to deal with but does not want to work with. I'll tell you what, one of the things when I go around, maybe it's because I'm an engineer, when I go around the country, I come back home and when I go around the country, I come back home and I appreciate this country. And one of the things that I've noticed is our infrastructure, be it waste, be it transportation, we are head and shoulders above most parts of the world. And Jim said something the other day that is so true, and I'm probably going to butcher it, but I'm going to try to remember as best I can. He said that there's a saying, that water is for life. It's essential for us to live, but sanitation is for dignity. Think about that. For those of you who've ever been in any other part of the world, if you've ever seen a commercial about a poor, third-world community, the one thing that's a constant is that their sanitation is in disarray, they have no infrastructure, and literally, children are dying before the age of one, because that society does not have this matter in its proper perspective. That's how important Jim's work is to all of us, and that's why I think it's important for this city council, and rightfully so, that we're honoring him today for his tremendous work and his thankless work. Those are my words. I think he's done thankless work. But I think it's appropriate for us to thank him on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and the people of this region. So with that, Jim, please say a few words.
Thank you very much, Tony. Councilman Cardenas, thank you for the very kind words. I appreciate the honor and the tribute that the council is paying to me this morning. But as Councilman Cardenas said, in my representation of the some seventy-eight cities that the sanitation districts serve, board of directors of the mayors of those seventy-eight cities, and the city of Los Angeles is a portion of our service area also, as well as unincorporated county territory. So working with all of those leaders has enabled me to be able to move forward and institute and implement the kind of projects that Councilman Cardenas is talking about. But also, there's a very special part of my duties over the years that I've enjoyed very much, and that's working with the city of Los Angeles, because you have your own excellent staff in the form of the Bureau of Sanitation and the Board of Public Works that provides the services that Councilman Cardenas talked about for your citizens. And one of the things that I'm proud of, and our staff is proud of, is that we have fostered working relationships and partnerships with the city of L.A. And I know Steve McGwin, who is behind me, who is going to be succeeding me as the chief engineer and general manager of the districts, is going to carry on in that tradition. So I want to end by thanking the council for the leadership that you've shown in providing the services to the city of Los Angeles, and would only hope that we can continue in the working relationship with all of the other cities that form the sanitation districts, so that together, we can provide these cost-effective, environmentally sound services for the citizens of L.A. County. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate the time, and again, it's a privilege and an honor that you would have taken the time to recognize me this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. If I can also add, I think I'm known around here as the trash man myself, so I know what it's like, but I want to commend you that on your watch, at the end of your career here, on your watch, that the county of Los Angeles, like the city of Los Angeles, is moving very quickly to alternative trash technologies, and that you're in the process of siting, hopefully, your first facility, just as L.A. is doing, and we will be the first two in the state of California to actually take a quantum leap in how we deal with our trash. So thank you for your leadership on that and getting us out of landfills. So with that, at this time, I'd like to give this resolution to James, Jim Stahl, for his efforts, thirty-seven years of professionalism, and bringing the word engineer in its proper place in saying that you are a leader, you have done wonderful things for all of us, and it's not just what you learned in school, it's who you are. God bless you, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Tony. Really appreciate it. Very kind of you. Thank you.
Steve. A little lower. There you go. Parks. Thank you, Ms. Cardenas.
I'm going to be joined by Mrs. Perry. First of all, I'd like Adrian Bass to come up, thirty-plus-year employee of the city of Los Angeles. I don't think Wendy's here yet. Oh, no, Wendy.
Wendy, Wendy, Wendy.
I'm sorry. We were just looking for Wendy.
Oh, my God.
All right.
Okay. Who is watching The Office? Who's watching The Office?
Joined by Wendy, Wendy Gruel, and Jan Perry, and some, and, let me see, there's only about a dozen, so obviously, the whole city clerk staff. I'm just pleased to, and first of all, and let everybody know, I'm not Janice Hahn today, but I'm doing this in her behalf, that she wanted to make sure that Adrian got a proper send-off after thirty years of service.
Almost thirty-one.
Okay, almost thirty-one. She's never changed. She's never changed.
She's still telling.
When I first met her, she was whispering in my ear twenty years ago.
Twenty-one years.
Twenty-one years ago. But Adrian started as a librarian, worked in a variety of areas of the city of Los Angeles. I met her in the eighties in LAPD, in our employment development process. She then left and went to CDD, and then eventually ended up in our city clerk's office. If you've been on the city council more than about twenty seconds, you've been at a committee in which she has been there handling the process. I think one of her crowning legacies would be, in addition to her committee work, was that she was selected by the city clerk to go on the president's commission. And I think when those issues dealing with education in this region are finally resolved, that work will be something that all of us can be proud of, and she was the primary clerk on that issue. And so I wanted to ensure that we gave her a proper send-off. Wendy has worked with her a great deal on the AG committee and a variety of things that she staffed, so we wanted to make sure that Wendy got up and spoke, and then Jan Perry. And so we wanted to let you know, we're going to give you time to speak. Don't worry about the clock right here.
You're not going to.
And so let me ask Wendy to come up and make some comments.
I won't highlight the brown area. Well, I think what Mr. Parks wanted to say was, not only did he whisper in her ear, but she tells us what to do, which is, and I'm sure her coworkers could attest to that, as well as other city council members, but they're laughing back behind me. But I've known Adrian, and I don't want to say her number, because she'll correct me, but. Twenty years. Twenty years, okay. When I started in nineteen eighty-three for the city of Los Angeles, which would be twenty-three, so I'll correct you, that I met Adrian when I first came to City Hall. But Adrian is one of those people who, this was more than just a job, more than just a career, it really was her life, and she was passionate, and I think that's why she would tell us what to do, is she was passionate about an issue that she was taking on, and it's her role in the city clerk. It was just not about staffing that committee, it was about giving her feedback and her interests and caring about the city of Los Angeles. And I know, as a family member, as a resident of my district, she reminds me frequently about what I need to do to take care of her mom there in the district. But Adrian, you really have, again, just been a friendly face. When my mom came and testified here in city council, you helped my mom through that, even though I was working for the mayor at the time, and my mom was testifying against my boss on a particular issue. But Adrian was just one of those people that if you met her, she was what City Hall is all about, about what city employees are all about. And so she has had many accomplishments, but most of all, she's become our friend here on the city council, and will be sincerely missed by all of us. But we know she won't be too far, and we know she will never give up the opportunity to tell us what to do, how we can do it better. So congratulations on your retirement. We'll miss you dearly. Thank you, Wendy. We can finally actually meet.
Actually, let me amend Wendy's last sentence. I think that she would not miss the opportunity to tell us how to do it better. Adrian is a consummate professional. She not only brings passion to her job, but she is professional, she mentors and teaches not only elected officials, but other colleagues in her own department and other departments as well, I am sure. So I have to tell you, this is one of the finest departments in the city, and as Wendy said, this is why it makes it such a special experience to work for the city of Los Angeles, because the pride in which employees take in their profession. And Adrian, thirty years is an astonishing body of work, and you certainly deserve to enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
And you will certainly be missed, but I have to say that she's raised the bar very high for all those who come after her, and I would dare say that we'll be talking about you for years to come, and once you've had some rest, I'm sure someone will be calling you for some, maybe a little bit of coming back every now and then. So congratulations.
Thank you, Jan.
Mr. Parks?
I'd just like to add two things. Adrian wanted me to tell you that when it said thirty-one years, she started when she was three. That's what she wanted me to say. And Jan hit on a point that she made clear, she's already decided to come back and volunteer with the library department.
Uh, work.
To work. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Work and volunteer. Obviously, there's income involved. But I wanted to ask Wendy and Jan to come up, we're going to present this to you. And all the, come up tight, so we get you all in the photos.
And Mr. Parks, we also have some historical references from Tom Labonge.
Okay. No, thank you very much, Mr. President. Adrian, congratulations. As I remarked, thirty-one years is like a, like a light, you know, lightning across the sky. It went so fast, and I look behind you, all those great clerks, and I think of John Ferraro, and I think everybody who's been in this chamber, and the clerks have been the infrastructure of the city council. Without the infrastructure, the streets of legislation would crumble. And you really all worked hard. I know a lot of times, I see Allen in the back smiling, there was things I wanted to do but couldn't be done for the right reasons, you know? And you, Adrian, always did have an opinion, which is so important. So not only did you get a clerk, you got a legislative analyst at the same time. But I want to thank all of you collectively, as you honor one of your own, for thirty-one years of service, which is so important. I wish you a very happy retirement and find your way to do whatever you do, but know that you were part of this great thing called the City of Los Analyst, and the clerk's office is the infrastructure, is the road, is that keeps us in line, so that these laws and ordinances that we pass do stand up, and I thank you. And Adrian, you deserve all this credit.
Next, also, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I'd just like to say a couple of words. You know, in government, we, as the electeds, we come and we go. And who holds it together? Who's the glue for the committees, for the history, for the documentation, for what it's all about? But the clerks. And I'm looking at your colleagues around you, and I'm chair of one committee, vice chair of another, and I see all the various clerks, and half the times when I run a meeting, now I have to figure out what I'm doing, it's the clerks who help us. So your history, your knowledge, your experience has been a tremendous contribution to the city. I was chair of public safety for like six weeks, right, in the beginning? You were right there as my clerk, helping me through that immediate moment. But one of the most incredible achievements of you, and part of your legacy, frankly, is when they formed the president's commission on the L.A. Unified School District, and you had a whole gaggle of people, and you were the glue that kept that group together, that came up with a great report, that's a backdrop to the reform we're doing in education in this city. And I want to thank you for your leadership and for you being the force that has kept a lot of projects moving from point A to point B, and actually, to conclusions. God bless you, and we look forward to you volunteering back with the city again. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Adrian, I just want to say that one of the most remarkable things about you is that you're just constant, all the, you're just so even keel and smooth, and it's been a pleasure to work with you and IGR. In fact, I've got my staff trying to put together a motion that will not allow you to retire. We will, we will force you to stay another thirty-one years. Anyway, I wish you the best, and it has indeed been a pleasure for me.
And also, next speaker would be Mr. Wezar.
Great, thank you very much. I too want to echo the words of praise that have been given to you, and as Bill Rosendahl mentioned, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, we know the great work you did on the president's joint commission. I got to know you there when I was the school board president, and given just sometimes the heated debates that went on, it was great to see your smiling face, and you brought people, made people feel calm, and all the commissioners just said some wonderful things about you, and the hundreds of hours that it took to go through that process. So thank you so much, and I know we'll still be seeing you around here, and it was great getting to know you through that process, and I look forward to continue to serve with you and make this city a better place. Thank you so much for the work you do.
And joining in, the president of the council, Mr. Garcetti.
And say just how incredible a presence you have been here. You are what Los Angeles City Council is about. You embody a love of this place, you embody an enthusiasm for this place, and one of the best things about getting to know you here was that you were unafraid of talking to anybody here, and you showed that, that sometimes those divisions and those boundaries that exist in government shouldn't have to, and that this is really the people's place, and that you had a certain sensibility that you brought here, that it was always making sure that we all knew we were part of a single family here, that we weren't, that there weren't certain people that had access that weren't supposed to be, that you were somebody who was always allowing all members of Los Angeles to come and to have access and to know how things work, and you explained it to some of us who didn't know how things worked early on, how this great, great vehicle of democracy worked. I can't think of City Hall without you here, and I know that you're going to be back here quite often. I know that you have many, many friends here, and you will visit us, and you're engaged in the community beyond what your job description was, whether it's music or other things. You always have been engaged long, way beyond what the formal job description you have. So we all love you very much and wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcetti. Mr. Parks.
My turn.
It's your time, baby.
All righty.
One sec, we have one more. Mr. Cardenas.
Adrian, I just want to say thank you very much for your service. You make our job easy. When we are sitting there in committee and we have a professional, actually, well, excuse me, I'm on camera, I shouldn't probably say this, the chairman and women are supposed to be running the committee, but when we have a professional like you, you're really making things flow and making it happen, and you make us look good. And I don't mean like make us look good visibly, you make us look good by making sure that things are in order, so that we can do policy in an orderly fashion, and we have better results. That's good for the people of Los Angeles. You're a wonderful person, you're a great person, you're easy to work with. We wish you the best, and I warned you in committee the other day, I'm sure you're going to be back in some way, and you already are. As a librarian, you're already committing some of your time and efforts back to the community and back to Los Angeles. God bless you in everything that you do, and Los Angeles is better for the fact that you've made this your career. Thank you.
And now, the woman of the hour, Adrian Bass, our dear friend and employee.
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to say I'm totally overwhelmed by this incredible reception from all of you. I've been with the city for thirty-one years, been in this job for twenty. I have seen probably, what, about forty council members come through this process? Forty to forty-five, something like that. And hundreds and hundreds of staff. And I just want to say that of all of, and I'm, and this is absolutely true from my heart, of all of the groups of council members, this has been one of the most warm, accepting, friendly, and easiest group to work with. I could tell you, I could regale you with some real interesting stories in the past. I do, I do want to, while I was listening to people talking, it just reminded me of three very cute little anecdotes that have to do with three of the council members who spoke here today. You know, nothing, nothing incriminating, don't worry. The first one was, I met Councilman Parks twenty-one years ago in the police department, and he was a commander at the time, and I was working in employee opportunity development, EODD. And he called down to my captain and twice asked my captain to write me a commendation. So I had two commendations from Commander Parks. Well, when he came on to council. How long ago was that?
Four years.
Four years ago. I came up to him and I said, Bernard, do you remember, and I want to thank you for those wonderful commendations that you had my captain write? He looked at me seriously, very stern-faced, and said, I did? Oh, shucks, I must have had a really off day. And Wendy and I go back, it's actually 20 years. I started in city clerks, and she was an intern in the mayor's. And I was friends with Paula Petrata, who's the head of the commission on status of women. Paula's desk was two or three desks behind Wendy's. So whenever I'd go into the mayor's office to visit Paula, I had to walk past Wendy. So it was always, hi Wendy, she'd go, oh, Paula's not in. So I go back a long time with Wendy. And just one other cute little anecdote with, with Eric. I got a chance one day, Eric's father, Gil Garcetti, prior district attorney, the county, was in council one day, and I had been told that his dad did this wonderful photography presentation on Disney Hall. And I am on the board of a support group for the Los Angeles Philharmonic. And the group had asked me, they said, well, you know Gil, you know Eric Garcetti, could you get his dad to do this presentation? So I thought, well, okay, I'm going to go up and I'm going to ask Eric to give me information on how to get ahold of his dad. So he gives me the phone number, and, you know, I called on the phone and got ahold of his dad. And one day, I still hadn't met his dad in person, I was in council, and Gil Garcetti was standing behind Eric, and Eric turned around and said, oh, I'd like you to meet my father. So introduces us. And I said, oh, I didn't know what's he here for. And Eric said, oh, it's Bring Your Father to Work Day. So I just want to, first, I'd like to acknowledge that my family's here, my parents, and my two sisters. Oh, yes, they have names. They do have names, yes. Rose and Nate Elbaum.
My Rose and Nate.
Rose and Nate. Wendy, Wendy actually never met them, but talked on the phone with my mom. And my sister Eve Williams, and my sister Miriam Dexter. And unfortunately, my brother and his wife, who live in Santa Barbara, could not be here today. But that would have been nice. But I just want to acknowledge that they took their time off from work to come here. My parents are still working, by the way, volunteering at, at the veterans hospital. And... That's great. Isn't that nice? And I also want to thank wholeheartedly the entire, just about the entire city clerk's staff. I don't think there's anybody left in the office watching, watching the office. And I see a lot of my friends here. So I want to thank everybody for being here and of my 31 years, this wonderful support. And I've decided my new career, actually, Tom, I'm going to be challenging you photography. In addition to the calendars... So, no, I am coming back to the library to work.
And on behalf of the entire city clerk's office, I want to thank you very much and present these flowers to you as well. And she is a world traveler, and so we'll be looking forward to hearing about all of your adventures, Adrian. Congratulations.
Thank you again, Ms. Bass, for your service. And Mr. Parks, thank you for your presentation. While you're setting up, Mr. Parks, for your next presentation, I want to acknowledge the presence in the chambers of a distinguished guest, the former speaker of the California State Assembly, a great legislator from the San Fernando Valley, Bob Hertzberg. Bob, welcome. Mr. Wesson, Mr. Speaker.
That I had the honor to serve with Bob Hertzberg for four years, and when the members of the assembly selected me as the individual to, to take his place, he spent a considerable amount of time with me, showing me the ropes, and I'm very appreciative of that. I wish we could give Bob Hertzberg, Bob Hertzberg, come here so you can be, Bob Hertzberg.
Bob, come on.
Come on, Bob, 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 Bob.
Cut to the line, come on.
Give this great man a round of applause. The 64th Speaker of the California State Assembly.
Mr. Cardenas, Assemblyman Cardenas.
Thank you. As a former colleague of Speaker Bob Hertzberg and a representative of the San Fernando Valley, I don't want to waste everybody's time about saying what a good guy he is. All I want to say is, this morning, my back was hurting, he saw me, he cracked my back with one of his hugs. Thank you, Bob, I needed that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Jan Perry and Herb Wesson to come up. We'd like to also ask Larry Grant, and where's Larry, Larry and his grandson, come up. We're here today because many of us on Monday will be participating in the 22nd Annual Martin Luther King Parade, going westbound on King Boulevard to Crenshaw, south on Crenshaw to La Mert Park. And this issue is dealing with the King Parade was a vision of Mr. Grant's over 25 years ago, several years in San Diego, then moved it to Los Angeles. If I'm not mistaken, it may be the largest MLK parade in the United States. And it's something in which well over 3,000 people participate in the parade itself. I'm sorry?
12,000.
Okay, Mr. Grant just doubled it. 12,000 people, triple it. 12,000 people participate in the parade while 500,000 people are on the parade route. And so we wanted to make sure that with the parade coming up on Monday, and many of us in the city of L.A. look at Martin Luther King's birthday as really the start of Black History Month, even though February is designated, it really kicks it off as it relates to the parade. And we wanted to make sure that we not only advise the public about the parade, encourage them to come out. It is such a phenomenal day and the fact that we end that day with the parade, with a festival in the 8th District all day long, with the ending with a gospel fest. And it gives a chance for us to remember all of the accomplishment of Dr. Martin Luther King and all of the issues that he stood for, and the things that we benefit because he gave his life for civil rights. And so I wanted to make sure we honored him, and I also want to make sure that Jan Perry and Herb Wesson, who, Herb Wesson and I share the parade because it goes through the 8th and 10th District. Jan Perry, we kind of use her area as a staging area, so it's a combination. If Jan Han was here, she certainly would be up here talking also. So let me ask Jan Perry to come up and make some comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. And I just want to say that it is an enormous inspiration as we come around the turn on the parade and to look on Crenshaw Boulevard and see the children, the family, the friends, the neighbors from all over the city gathered there to celebrate and remember, and to celebrate a man whose life continues to touch all of us. So Larry, we will, and when we, when we see Larry on the route and he gives you the nod, you know you're okay.
I always give you a big kiss, too.
Yeah, he always gives all the ladies a big kiss, too. But we look forward to this every year, and I think this year I'll be riding with Wendy, and we'll have some other visitors in the car as well. But each year you continue to teach and to grow, and I believe that the parade's also broadcast on the internet. So not only do you have the people on the parade route, but people who want to watch it online. Channel 4, KNBC, not that I'm plugging any particular station, but it happens to be KNBC that day. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President and members, it's, it's an honor for me to be here today, standing next to Larry Grant, who is a phenomenal individual. He's done more than just put this Kingdom Day Parade together, but I wanted to spend a moment, if I can, on the Kingdom Day Parade. A lot of people, half a million people or more, come out and enjoy it. People don't understand how difficult it is, all of the logistics, all of the work that has to be put together to make this successful. The six or 12,000 volunteers that, that are there, I mean, they have to be given instructions. And if you have, have, if you get a chance to know Larry, you'll know he's a sweetheart of a guy, but he is a tyrant. He is a tyrant.
I don't know Larry.
Where it relates, where it relates to the parade. He is a tyrant. And this is the only event that I've been affiliated with for almost 20 years that every year gets better. It gets better, it gets bigger. This is the only thing that gets better all the time. And anyway, Larry, thank you for bringing this to Los Angeles from San Diego, and I look forward to riding in my float on Saturday where I will be doing a trip, Monday, Monday, Monday. I had a scene, you know, I'm going to have my own parade Saturday.
Down your street, huh?
And then I'm going to come to Larry's parade, but we're going to do a tribute to James Brown.
Are you going to sing?
On Sunday. No, I'm not going to sing.
For additional comments, we have Mr. Labonge. Mr. Labonge?
Where's my grandson?
Councilmember Labonge?
I apologize, Mr. President, members, all of you. The greatest thing about a community is when we have a parade. And then we had a great leader, Dr. Martin Luther King, and then the community comes together. And I love to see the parade. I remember when the parade started, when I was working in the early other roles in City Hall, and to see the beauty of everybody out on Martin Luther King and the parade. And I know it's, it's been refined, and is it going to be broadcast again live this year on KNBC, Channel 4? They are very special to do that and commit that, and I think the parade king, Mr. Lomas, is helping you out there. He does the Hollywood Parade, so it's good to see everybody have such a celebration. I want to congratulate you. And the late, great Celeste King III, who I knew, I worked with when I worked with John Ferraro, who somehow had a little help in pushing everything down the right way. God bless you all. Hope to see you Monday. Thank you.
Let's do the photo right quick. And Mr. Grant can speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. It's indeed a pleasure to be here. And I, I don't see Janice Han here, but I understand that. But I wanted to say, I wanted to say to her and all of the city council people that it was her father, supervisor Kenneth Han, who initially supported me from the beginning of this parade in 1986. And I wanted to say that to her, I know she's not here, but it'll be recorded, so. And how do I get a copy of the VHS tape of this?
We'll get one for you.
Thank you.
We'll sell you one, it'll be decent.
Thank you. Just give me a 10% discount on the price. Okay.
On eBay.
Now, also, Mr. President of the city council, I would like to ask if there's any way that the city council could provide a proclamation or certificate for my grandson, because since he was 12 years old, he has been volunteering his time to support me, and he's now 35 years old, and he's never received anything from the city of Los Angeles.
It gives me great pleasure, having taken orders from Mr. Parks for many years, to order Mr. Parks to present that resolution.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Now, before you leave, Mr. City Attorney, before you leave...
Look at him bossing everybody around.
I said he's a tyrant.
I would like to say, I'm sorry you didn't give us a call in time, but if you show up, we will find a place for you, sir.
No, he'll be in the parade.
Oh, okay.
Rocky will be in the parade.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Rocky will be in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, we'll take care of that.
All right. One minute, one more thing to do.
Sorry.
I would also like to introduce the council to my military reviewing officer, a young man who is the deputy commander of the 40th Infantry Division in Los Alamos, Brigadier General John Harrell. Please come up, John. And the reason I want the general here is because in 1952, 53, I served with the 40th Division in Chonchan, Korea. So I wanted you to meet the military reviewing officer for the King Day Parade this coming Monday. Please.
This is awesome, the year I was born.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, you wish to do your final presentation?
Yes, sir.
Oh, one, I need to give them each one.
We'll take care of that.
Okay, will you?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a unique treat today. We have a group of young people that are part of a a cappella choir that are here all the way from Yale University. And I'm going to ask, before we give the presentation, for Shades to come up into the chamber and to perform for us, and then we'll give them their presentation.
We are Shades of Yale, Yale's youngest a cappella group. We were founded in 1988 to celebrate music of the African-American tradition. And the last song we sang for you was "Nkosi Sikileli Africa," the national anthem of a free and democratic South Africa. And the next song we have for you is very important to Shades because it was arranged by our founding members, and it's a medley of "Amen, We Shall Overcome." It's especially important that we sing these songs all year round, not just in February, not just around Martin Luther King Day, but also on these days. And so that's our, that's what we have for you today. Thank you.
We shall overcome.
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 Oh, deep in my heart, I do believe that we shall overcome.
Sisters and brothers.
We shall overcome.
We shall overcome.
We shall overcome.
We shall overcome.
Oh, deep in my heart, I do believe that we shall overcome. We shall overcome.
I know many of you that have heard that thought you sound the same way when you're in the shower this morning, but probably not. Let me ask Millet to come up, who is our co-tour manager. We just are fortunate enough to have them in Los Angeles on one of their tours, and it's so important that we had an opportunity to see their skills and have an opportunity to them honor us with their presence. Just to give you a background, they started as a volunteer group and used to begin their programs for a Valentine's program in a small convenience store a few years ago. They've moved to the point that recently, they performed in August 2003 in South Africa in front of 20,000 people, where the presence of the President Nelson Mandela and the royal family was present. They do a considerable amount of outreach in dealing with public service, having performed in Puerto Rico for the benefit of one of the public high schools and also a women's shelter. And in behalf of the Bell Foundation, an organization in New England, they also provide underprivileged youth with mentoring programs to help them excel academically. The Boston Arts Academy, the Public Conservatory in Boston, also for musically gifted children. They have a well-rounded group of young people, and so often, we, in the City of LA, when we think about young people, we read headlines about violence, drugs, and a variety of other things. But here's a group of young people that are doing very positive things in a world-renowned educational institution of Yale, but here today to honor us in the City Council. Let me ask Millet to come up and make some comments.
Hello, thank you so much for having us today. As Councilman Bernard Parks mentioned, we were founded at Yale University in 1988 to sing music of the African-American tradition. We were founded, actually, at a program now called Culture Connections, which was then called PROP, because many of the, many of our founders wanted to sing music that they were comfortable with, that they grew up with, that they could spread around Yale and also in the country, so around the country, and luckily, in the last few years around the world. So we are blessed to be here today, and I cannot thank you enough, the City of Los Angeles, City of Long Beach, all the schools that we performed at, Crystal Sarah's Organization, and of course, Councilman Bernard Parks for having us in this city and for treating us so well. So thank you so much for the weather, the, for everything. So thank you very much.
Thank you, that was a beautiful presentation. Next presenter would be Councilmember Labange on behalf of Councilmember Hahn.
Members, good morning. On behalf of our colleague, Councilmember Janice Hahn of the 15th District, who was representing her district at a funeral this morning, she asked me, on behalf of all of us, to present this very special resolution in honor of Nathan Alexander Lewis. I'm joined this morning by his daughter, Queen Jasan, who will receive this special proclamation, resolution, and also, the honoree, Nathan Alexander Lewis, is watching on TV, so you can wave to your father right there. All right, Daddy, we'll give him a big hand. Whereas Nathan Alexander Lewis volunteered and was inducted into the Army of the United States on December 3, 1941. He served in the American Theater throughout the United States until July 3, 1944. Nathan Alexander Lewis is one of the many African-Americans who volunteered for infantry duty in early 1945 in response to the call from the headquarters of the European Theater, the operation to replace the infantry lost during the Battle of the Bulge. Whereas Nathan Alexander Lewis, after volunteering, received combat infantry training in France for six weeks and departed to the European Theater of Operations and arrived there on the 14th of July, 1944. His arm of service was the quartermaster, and his military occupation especially was that of chef and cook. Whereas Nathan Alexander Lewis advanced to the rank of Technician 5th Grade, Tech 5, with special orders from the headquarters as a member of the 14th Armored Division, to be awarded the Military Occupation Special Badge, and was Advanced Rifleman, and later received the Rifleman Award and Badge. Whereas Nathan Alexander Lewis was awarded the Combat Infantry Badge, along with the European-African Middle East Theater Campaign Medal, which included three Bronze Stars, and participated in the Allied Invasion of Normandy on June 5 through the 25th of July in 1944, and also in the Rhineland Campaign in September of that, 1944, and the Central European Campaign in May and March of 1945. Whereas as a member of the Armed Forces of the United States between December 7, 1941, and December 2, 1945, he was awarded the Combat Infantry Badge and Combat Medical Badge for his exemplary conduct on the ground against the armed enemy, and therefore commissioned to receive the Bronze Star. Whereas Alexander, Nathan Alexander Lewis will also receive the Army Occupation Medal in Germany in his class. This was awarded to soldiers who served in Berlin for more than 30 consecutive days. Whereas Private Nathan Alexander Lewis received the Honorable Discharge in October 22, 1945. Now therefore, being resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the mayor, along with the city attorney and the city controller, and all of the City Council do hereby commend Nathan Alexander Lewis for his courage and bravery, as he receives, along with all other awards and medals, the Good Conduct Medal and the World War II Victory Medal. This is a very special honor for your father, long overdue. To present that is General John S. Harrow, also a native Angelino, who graduated from Rodeo Hills High, and you saw him earlier being saluted by the Martin Luther King Parade organizers. General, would I ask you to take the microphone, please?
Thanks, sir. I'd first like to say a few things about Mr. Lewis and his generation. The great generation gave us the freedoms that we have today. Mr. Lewis was one of those few soldiers that actually went eye to eye in rifle to rifle with the enemy. That's what the Combat Infantry Badge means, and today, the Combat Action Badge that non-infantry soldiers will get when they're in Iraq or Afghanistan. But this means he's one of the few people that actually was rifle to rifle, in this case with the German Army, one of the best armies of its time, and was in combat, and provided the force behind the liberation of Europe. So I would like to put that on his daughter in his place. The other badge I'd like to pin on in front of this body is the Bronze Star. This is an award for heroism, which means while he was in that combat zone where he was fighting rifle to rifle with the German Army, he did something above and beyond the average infantryman that got the Combat Arms Badge. Unfortunately, we didn't get the certificate with the Bronze Star, so I could read exactly what his exploits were, but to simply get this badge tells us he did one step more than I'd like everybody to give Mr. Lewis a big hand.
Thank you. Hi, Daddy. I lost my mother Wednesday, January 10. Hi, Mom, I know you're looking down here on this. They wanted me to come home for her, before she died, and I had to stay here for this. My birthday is July the 10th. She died on the 10th, and this year is 2007. To me, that was a message from my mom, that I know you got to do what you got to do for your dad, and it's okay. And I was the last of my eight brothers and sisters to speak to her. So I am so happy to be here for my dad and for my family. Yes, this is an overdue honor, but I told the kids, but we're gonna celebrate. I'm getting ready to have all the pins put on the jacket, and I am the model for the National Geographic's King Tut exhibit, and it's my image that's been used in the National Geographic, representing the King Tut exhibit. And Hollywood has taken my image, and everyone is using it, and when I come back from my mother's funeral, I'm getting ready to put together my own documentary movie, so everybody can know who I am and why all the celebrities asked me for my autograph. And I'm just saying that my dad has taught me how to give people magic. I give magic back to the children. My dad was a magician and a minister, and one day, when I was in school, I saw thousands of kids running towards something, and I had to go and see what that was, and in the middle of it, it was my daddy. He taught me how to command the attention of the world, and right now, we're gonna use this medal ceremony to help put an end to people, especially children, using the N-word. And I spoke to the young people, and I told them, as Ambassador of Goodwill for the Children of Los Angeles, African-Americans, you come from Africa and be proud of it. You can call yourself an African, and you're African-American, but the N-word was, has a lot of hate and a lot of stuff behind it, and it's nothing to play with, and we're gonna take this jacket around and promote that to the young people in the world. And I was honored here for my project, The Magic of L.A., which Mayor Bradley gave me a grant for after the L.A. riots. And with this program, I'm gonna sing a piece of the song that I wrote, that the kids, when I come back, we're going in the studio, record, "I Wanna Give Peace to the World." And I saw the singers, and I told them, "Y'all know what to do." (Singing) Peace to the world, love's everlasting. Peace to the world, love's everlasting. I wanna give peace to the world. Don't you know love's everlasting? Peace to the world, love's everlasting. Oh, they're fighting in South Africa, and people just wanna be free. They're fighting in the deserts of Saudi Arabia and Iraq and Iran, and there's blood all over me. The children are dying, the mothers are crying. The red seas turn black, and oh, oh, I wanna give something back. I wanna give peace to the world. And don't you know love's everlasting? Peace to the world, love's everlasting. I wanna give peace.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next presenter will be Council-
The big thing, though, is your dad, and let's give him, he's watching it, his service to this country over 60 years ago. Let's give Nathan Alexander Lewis a big hand. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much. Okay, here we go.
Mr. Wesson?
Mr. President and members, before the next presentation, we have another celebrity visitor, and, oh, I'm s-
Ms. Grohl was going to do-
I'm sorry, I didn't know he's-
The Speaker has stepped in.
I think so.
Was a buddy of mine, Pedro Nava, an Assemblyman for the Santa Barbara region, and I'll let Wendy continue, maybe, I don't know what committees you chair now, maybe, okay?
As, as-
Yeah, I got a-
You did. Chair of the Transportation Committee, but Mr. Wesson's a member of the Transportation Committee, so he and a former Speaker today, we're lucky to have had a former Speaker Hertzberg that you introduced, but also, even more importantly, to our everyday lives here in Los Angeles, is Assemblymember Pedro Nava, who is Chair of the Transportation Committee for the Assembly, and is someone that is gonna help make sure that all those monies were funded through the November ballot are gonna come to Los Angeles, and a little bit to Santa Barbara. But he's here today to learn about what's happening in Los Angeles on transportation issues and go to our Port of Los Angeles. I'd just like to recognize him, maybe you wanna say just a few words to-
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, Councilmember and Mr. Speaker Wesson. And I wanna thank the City of Los Angeles for its hospitality today. They've taken the time to give me an orientation to your transportation issues, your transit issues, and this afternoon, I'm gonna have the opportunity to look at your ports, recognizing the incredible economic vitality of this area, the growing population, and the brilliance of your staff and your elected officials in keeping California first and making sure that we're prosperous and have jobs for people into the next century. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Assemblyman, for joining us. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have chosen to honor today a very special woman, and her name is Christine Pat Smith, known to everyone as Miss Pat. And I wanted her to come in today so that we could speak about her contributions to the community. Now, I'm just gonna give you a few facts about Pat, and it's gonna sound like just your regular story of a good person who does good work for the community, but let me assure you, this is a very unusual story. Now, Pat did begin working with children in South Los Angeles, and in particular, in the 9th District, as a teacher's aide at Victory Baptist Church Day School in 1983, and she's always been involved in working with kids and their families. And in 1989, Pat, along with her close friend Shirley Harris and sister Ernestine Harris, organized a group called the 48th and 49th Street Youth- organized a group called the 48th and 49th Street Youth Club. And her goal was to expose young people to places they may not have had the opportunity to visit. She organized so many trips just to all the great places in Southern California so the kids could have fun. And many times their parents joined the kids on the trips. And today, the trips are still going strong. She also organized Easter egg hunts and that went on for five years and a community parade between the blocks of McKinley Avenue, Wadsworth Avenue, 48th and 51st Street. Often when she had the Easter egg hunts, the neighbors would lend their yards for the hunt and then a community dinner. Along with raising three of her own kids, she has taken care of foster kids. She's taken care of her own kids, foster kids, and then all the kids in the neighborhood. She's also coordinated special events and programs for the community for 17 years. For her church, for Black History Month, Christmas programs, weddings, for families and community gatherings, she has always given of herself. But her dedication to the health and welfare of children in our community was never more clear than it was last year than by a very simple and powerful act. And some of you may remember this story because it was on the news. Last year, a six-year-old girl was abducted from in front of 49th Street Elementary School. The suspect took the child to a dark area just outside of her back door. When Pat saw this child who had been accosted by the suspect, she yelled at the suspect and he fled the scene. She then called the police and this child was reunited safely and unharmed with her family. I think she deserves a hand for that. Thanks to Pat's description of the suspect, he was quickly apprehended. It turned out that he was wanted in five other cases of the same type at other schools in the area. Pat not only saved this child, by positively identifying the suspect, by being alert, by being involved, she saved countless other children from something that may have, for crime that they may have fallen victim to. So I wanted to take this opportunity because many times we say, well, what can we do? What can we do to reduce crime in our community? Well, Pat Smith is an example of what we can do. It didn't cost any extra money. It didn't cost anything. All it took was someone who was vigilant and made a call and someone who listened and responded on the other end. So I have to tell you that I believe that Pat is a community hero and she is standing here with friends, family, and people who love her. And I just wanted us to have the time out of our busy day to take a moment and honor this special woman who has cared almost all of her life for children in the community. Thank you, Pat.
First of all, I'd like to say I just thank God. I thank God for having me to be right there at that time. I thank Jan Perry. I thanked the Councilmen for letting us come. And most of all, I thank God for my family and my friends in the 48th Street Club because without them, I know, they've been there for me all the time. Like she was saying, we do a lot of things in the community a lot of people don't know about, but that's okay because we are there for the children. We are there for anybody that need help. And we just thank God for in our life and we just thank God for being able to let us be able to help and never turning our back away from children and no one else. So once again, I would just like to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
I am happy. I am happy. I have a dream.
I got a dream.
One day. We're going to work it out. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream.
I got a dream.
One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream.
I got a dream.
One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. We're going to work it out. One day. I have a dream. I got a dream. One day. These kids, in this quote, were basically saying, "They were labeling us, they were beating them out of us." You recognize that. And did you get paid extra for it? No, you didn't. Did anyone tell you you had to be that way? No, you didn't. You chose to. God bless you.
Thank you so much, the city of Los Angeles. Before you get to speak, we have one more, Mr. Labange.
I just want to say how excited it is today and how anxious you are to speak, which is great, but how important people who teach people, who teach students are. And students, I remember my high school English teacher, Mr. Hickman, who did give me a D in English, but he taught me how to write a paragraph. And to this day, I'm able to focus, you know, much better on that. I hate to admit I got a D in anything, but it was deserved because I was not focusing. And you're making young people focus, which is the key. And then on a personal note, when I joined with Mr. Garcetti at the Star Ceremony this week, you were there to see that. It's a wonderful world when you see the full connection, you see the face, the person, the motivation, the drive, the inspiration of why they make a picture in Hollywood. But whoever wrote the picture had an English teacher and had somebody pushing them, so it's very good. I think people remember their English teachers and they remember their coaches if they look at past because of what they do to drive them. Thank you, congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Erin.
I want to thank the city of Los Angeles because this story actually takes root right here in your community. This beautiful, accomplished young woman standing next to me was born and raised in East Los Angeles. And in the backdrop of Los Angeles riots, this little girl learned how to pick up a pen rather than a gun and to write what needs to be written. And this young woman is just a representative of 149 other students who could be standing here today who were written off by the educational system. And through their tenacity and their belief and their dreams, they were able to put down those spray cans, put down their fist, and pick up a pen and truly tell the world what it needs to be told. Their book, The Freedom Writer's Diary, is being used in classrooms across our county, across our state, and now across our world. And Maria Reyes is just one example of 149 other students who truly changed their lives, and their story is universal. It's a snapshot of so many kids who were hopeless, who found hope; so many kids who didn't have dreams, who are now big dreamers. And so many kids are going to go into a darkened theater this weekend, look up at the big screen and say, "That's my story." So it's an honor for me to have one of my students here today. She's now not only a high school graduate, the first in her family, she is a college graduate, the first in her family, and she, like Martha King, someday wants to get her PhD and to prove to people what it means to be judged by the content of her character, not the color of her skin. Please introduce Maria Reyes of Freedom Writer.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I promise I'll keep it short and sweet. I just want to thank Ms. Grul. Thank you for giving us this opportunity, not only to celebrate teachers and students, but most importantly, to celebrate education. Education truly made me understand through the words and the lessons that Ms. Grul taught me in Room 203 what a powerful being I truly was. And I think that because she taught me how to critically think, I understood that education should be more than a slogan or a soundbite. Through critical thinking, I think I learned to question the fact that we all talk about the dream, but I think it's time we're all ready to actually start living the dream. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very, very much. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Smith for the next commendation.
Thank you, Madam President. We had about 20 people here from Northridge that had been sitting through. I think they enjoyed some of what they saw. I thank them for saying, I told them I'm going to say a few words, and then afterwards, I want to make it very much worth their while for waiting today. But I have someone here today who, if I gave you her name, Nancy Cartwright, most of you probably don't know the name. If you ran into her in the market, you wouldn't know who she was, but when she says something, you'll know who she is. So I'd ask her to say real quickly a word or two, and you'll all know what I'm talking about. Nancy?
Hi, I'm Bart Simpson. What's happening, ma'am?
The voice of Bart Simpson. Nancy's not here because she's the voice of Bart Simpson, but because she's an extraordinary community activist. A couple of years ago, she was asked to serve as honorary mayor by the Northridge Chamber of Commerce as Mayor of Northridge, but she's taken it to a whole nother level, not just serving at ceremonial events, but actually getting involved in the community and doing some very important things. All of us have Police Activity League programs in our districts, in our various police divisions. Nancy got in there with a project we've been working on for a couple of years to build a new PALS center in the community of Northridge. We've been trying to raise a few million dollars to do that. We're working with Water &amp; Power on getting some land. That deal is almost signed and ready to go, and so we were trying to raise the money to build this fabulous new facility for the youth at risk in our community. And all of us know that it is the best way to keep people out of trouble, the kids that are at risk, are to give them something positive to do. And that's why the PALS organization is such an incredible force in our community to right the wrongs of the needy and also really provide a really safe place for kids to go, to have a positive impact and a positive relationship with the community. And so Nancy got involved in that program and held a fundraiser at her home, which she'd been working on for about a year to fix up and get really ready for this party, and raised over $100,000 for the Northridge Devonshire PALS. So we're joined today by most of the board of the PALS organization. I see almost all of them here who came out from Northridge today to say thank you to Nancy for her leadership in the community, her leadership on the PALS program, and also just for being Bart Simpson. It was really cool, dude. So I want to present Nancy with this recognition for her work for the PALS community and the community of Northridge in particular, and thank her, and say a few words, maybe in Bart Simpson-esque or one of your other voices, if you would. Please.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Greg, so much. Yeah, most people, it's kind of cool to be an anonymous celebrity where I can go anywhere. And even in my own community, people don't recognize me for who I am, but I do feel that it's responsibility of artists and like, you know, the artists that we've had even here today. You know, to me, it's the artists that make a difference in the world and who it is, who we are and what it is that we do to set a good example and be role models for everyone out there and especially our youth. As the voice of Bart Simpson, like I was saying, it's really, really fun to have this position, to go into my own community. And I have to say, though, that I've got a lot of backup. This is my posse back here behind me. You know, we've got a lot of board members of PALS with me and Officer Sandoval, who actually runs the youth center and goes in there every single day with these kids. And we're operating out of an apartment building, you know, 800 square feet, so this youth center is really, really important. And Lorre New, who's the president of the Police Activities League, she's also here with me. I'm so pleased to be a part of this particular group because it's very supportive and they're kind of a gung-ho group that when my staff, Cartwright Entertainment, kind of came in to help out, it kind of gave us an opportunity to be able to do what it is that we want to do, which is reach out and help these kids. So all of us, I thank you so much, Congressman, for helping and for giving me this. Thank you very much.
Now, I told, thank you. I told Nancy, it was a long wait, and I appreciated the wait, and I wanted to make them worth their while. A few months ago, my staff, working with the mayor's office, put in a request in for funding from CDBG. And I want to announce today that I would just receive the list an hour ago from the mayor's office, and the Devonshire PALS program is scheduled to receive $1 million. I do want to thank the mayor for his support of that project, and as you can see, it was worth their weight. So thank you to the PALS board. I think we're almost there?
I think we're there.
We're there. We're going to get the building built. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, Mr. Rosendahl would like to, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Bart Simpson, I just can't get over it a million times over, but first of all, with the money you're getting with the city and the work you did, you know, The Simpsons is one of those programs that a lot of people watch, even I, because it is a social statement and a social commentary on what's going on. And the fact that you are for real doing great social changes just adds more value to me for The Simpsons. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, and thank you to all of you, and congratulations. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Weston and Mr. Labange.
I can't believe it.
Where'd you grow up? Where did you grow up?
Get rid of that, Dayton, Ohio.
Dayton, Ohio, all right. Good job. You got it, you got it.
Good morning, everybody. Was that a great inspirational presentation by Mr. Smith, some great people of the San Fernando Valley? And here we are, another part of the city, but all over the California and the United States this weekend, we salute Korean-American Day. I'm joined by my colleague, Mr. Herb Weston. We're also joined by William Meng, right here, who has such great history here. His father was the first council general of the United States. Please give him a big hand. Stephen Cole, right here, a great leader, who I see hiking in Griffin Park often. It's great to see you, give you a big hand there. And Alex Chit, good to see you. Congratulations on your special involvement in this very special weekend. And also, very much, Ms. Lee, for your work and all the work that you've done to help promote Korean-American friendship. As we may or may not know, Madam CAO, but over 100 years ago, Korean-Americans came to Los Angeles, to California, migrated to the United States. Here in the City of Angels, it was just a little corner grocery store at Jefferson and Vermont Avenue. And as hard work and determination took it, and especially education and the push, they grew in our community and got involved with the Normandy Avenue, Olympic Boulevard area, where they have a dominant business community. And now in Wilshire Center, on the Grand Boulevard of Los Angeles, Wilshire Boulevard, all the buildings and economic development, the revitalization, is being led by the Korean-American community. We honor them this weekend for Korean-American Day. We honor them for their work and the determination as individuals who care about the United States, who care about California, and especially care about Los Angeles. They're great angels in the City of Angels, and I'm pleased to join with my colleague, Mr. Weston, who represents the primary part of Koreatown as we celebrate it. Mr. Weston, for remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange, and I too am very proud to be here with two individuals that I do consider close friends of mine and supporters. Whenever the community needs anything, all you have to do is call Mr. Mem or Steve Coe, and they're always there. Plus, he has a bank, so I'm always friendly with people who have affiliations with banks. But it was Tom referenced, over 100, yeah, I think it was 1903, when the first Korean immigrants came to Hawaii, I think was the first state, which shows how intelligent they were because they liked the good climate.
Right.
And from Hawaii, some of them branched over here to Los Angeles. And I'm proud that we live in a region that has the second, the largest Korean population outside of Korea. It's the least that we could do to honor them because we have blood ties with the Korean people. They were there with us in World War I, World War II, and when we were in Vietnam, the Korean government sent troops there. I want to say that the Korean troops were there as the first troops to assist us. So I'm honored to stand here with Tom to honor you and to hope that tomorrow we have a happy Korean-American Day.
Madam President, Mr. Weston, I'd like to ask William Meng to say a few words.
President, distinguished members of City Council, friends, ladies and gentlemen, I believe the United States was built by heroism and patriotism of many great people. During World War II, a young Korean-American lieutenant was asked if he wanted to get transferred out of all Japanese-American military unit. He replied, "Absolutely not, sir. We are all American soldiers, and our only concern is to fight for the country." That officer, Colonel Young Kim, by the way, was the native of Los Angeles, led that particular 442nd Unit into victory all over Europe, finally into Germany. Around the same time, an elite group of fighter pilots was specially assigned to escort US bombers over the Europe mission. Those fighters, over a period of time, encountered hostile anti-aircraft fires and well-trained German fighter planes, but they maintained their bravery and kept the loss of US bombers to record minimum. Those Tuskegee airmen were young, black, American heroes. At the dawn of US history, the pilgrims discovered bitter winter in Newland, but they did not retreat. They stayed on to build a foundation for this great nation. Recently, when Los Angeles suffered civil disobedience with properties and possessions devastated, yet their dream, American dream, unscathed, Korean-Americans stayed on and reconstructed damaged part of the city and rebuilt their lives. They too were heroes. Today, young Korean-Americans reached maturity, and they are joining the mainstream in all areas. Currently, in West Point, there are 150 Korean-American cadets, and 1,000 volunteers are serving on the front line in Iraq. Your recognition of Korean-American Day today further reaffirms our belief in great American dream and further inspires our desire to hold hand in hand with everybody and all the other Americans and live, serve, and enjoy this uniquely great city and great country together. Thank you very much.
Well said. I would say, too, it's what a great, great remarks that you made there and summed it all up there. I do want to add, too, that this year, we dedicated for the first school in the United States, first public school named after Korean-American Charles Kim. It's Second and Western, right there in the heart of the fourth district. And it was so nice to have that great patriot, Korean-American patriot. But with that in mind and all the work there, and Ms. Lee, you got the full official resolution that you are going to share tomorrow to everybody in that celebration. But Alex, we want to present you this commendation, and I want to take that visitor pass off because there's no, come on in here, Alex. We want to salute you for your commitment and dedication to preserving the wonderful heritage of Korean-Americans living in this great City of Angels. Best wishes on a most successful event, as the Chair, General Secretary, Alex Che. Give him a big hand right now, please.
Okay, come on. Look to your left.
Okay, and Madam President, we say, "Come, sa bida, chingo."
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Give him a big hand.
Colleagues, that will end our presentations. We're going to run through the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Cardiniss Grohl-Hahn, Weisar Labange, Parks Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl Smith, Vice Weston Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First items, please.
Approval of the minutes.
That's moved by Mr. Weisar and Mr. Garcetti. Seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings. Items one through five are street lighting ordinances, first hearings, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearing as an ordinances to February 2nd. And I believe there is a card on number one. Do you want to call that one special?
Thank you. I'm sorry, which one had a card on it?
Item number one, I believe.
Item number one, okay. Maybe from the, we'll call that special, then.
And then that would leave two to five to February 2nd.
Thank you. Those will be continued to February 2nd. Next items?
Next items on the agenda are also street lighting districts. These are the second hearings, items six through 13. I believe there's a card on number 12. On, do you wish to call that one special?
Okay, we'll call item number 12 special.
And then that would leave six through 11 and 13.
We'll move those forward, then, and seeing no specials, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved.
And then the ordinances on those will go over for one week.
Thank you for the second reading. Next item?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 14 through 16. Items 14 and 16, the committee reports have both been committed, submitted on those items, and there is an amending motion that has been submitted on item number 14, and it has been circulated to the council members.
I think we'll hold that one on the desk for the amendment.
It's already been distributed, unless somebody wishes to call it special.
Okay, no, so, all right, then those have been distributed. Madam Clerk, open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Been approved. Thank you. 16 forthwith, please. Next items?
Can we do a forthwith on 15, please?
Forthwith on 15, thank you.
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 17 through 19.
Any specials on 17 through 19? Not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items?
Next items, Madam President, they are in the special meeting. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and take up the special meeting at this time?
Yes, please.
Cardiniss Grohl-Hahn, Weisar Labange, Parks Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl Smith, Vice Weston Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Madam.
Thank you. Those items.
First items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held, items 20 through 22. Items 20 and 21, the committee is submitting recommendation, or the CAO recommendations without recommendation, a motion is required on those two.
Thank you. Anyone calling those items on the queue? Not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items will move forward, then. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is an item for which public hearing has not been held, item 23, and there is a card on that. If you wish to take that up now, since you are in the special meeting.
We'll actually hold that on the desk.
Okay. Do you wish to continue that matter, then, to the regular meeting and go back?
Yes, please.
First item, then, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Yes, we will do, I think we have a few public comment cards. We'll do those first. Okay, thank you. On public comment cards, I'd like to call up the following: Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, Candido Merez, Jose Morales, and then we will go to the ballot.
My name is Ms. Hawkins. As we rebuild our jail cells, our justice system, bail and bond, and police route of stopping, killing, and arresting the public people, slavery trafficking in churches, or officials, we must not vote upon officials using laser or shotguns. Training officials or police officers must use heavy force with gunshots, real bullets only, since airports, ports, Murray Park areas, trains of illegal travel will not, again, talking about cargoes, will not harm these felonies of people. This is only sending inmates of these criminals back to sickness and disease with these type of electronic or electric shock-shooting guns. It's not basically fulfilling the job. These guns are a new method brought here from British, Spain, London, put upon, or put on also by 114 countries that's versing the United States from America. This is not for the 50 states to the eight states of the United States route of how we want to handle riots or things that have been stolen out of cargoes with the public people, and now the police have electronic or shotguns. It is not doing the job. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you. Candido Merez, followed by Jose Morales.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmembers, no, I'm not homeless. These are my shopping bags. As you know, the shopping cart issue in the Daily News is a hot one. It's provoked a lot of anger. My issue is, is that when you ask, when you call people that work hard all day and have no vehicles to get to the store, and they start criminalizing them, I have a problem with that. Because most of these people are hardworking, decent folks. And can you imagine, most of the people live anywhere from five, six, seven, eight blocks from the stores, and they've got to carry this amount of bags? So rather than wasting $55,000 hiring a city employee to do that job, I've already made a suggestion, why don't we hire nonprofits, utilize our money, let them make a little extra from going, by going to the grocery stores and collecting a little more money for those carts? Or, Madam President, if you like, I know a 54-year-old individual with heart problems, but listen, he's willing to go to work, and for $49,999, here we go, folks, right here, you can hire this individual. He'll do the same work, and he'll give $5,000, rather than keeping the whole 55, he'll do it for $49,999. He'll take 1,000, give it to the YMCA, he'll give 1,000 to the Jeopardy, he'll give 1,000 to the Children of the Night, 1,000 to the San Fernando Rescue Mission. But rather than wasting $55,000 hiring a city employee to do something that the shopping, excuse me, the grocery store should be doing it on their own, is crazy. We can find better uses of our monies. Thank you, Madam President, council members. And I'm not looking for votes, I'm about activism. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Jose Morales?
Mi nombre es Jose Morales. Soy miembro de la Mesa Ejecutiva de SEIU Local 1877, representando el área del aeropuerto. Y trabajo como trabajador de la limpieza en Terminal 2.
Hello, my name is Jose Morales, and I'm a member of the Executive Board of SEIU Local 1877, representing our airport division, and I work as a janitor at LAX, cleaning Terminal 2. Yo tengo un seguro médico y un sueldo justo porque trabajo con aerolíneas en Terminal 2 que han contratado un contratista responsable y que es de unión. I have health care and a wage that I can live on because the airlines in Terminal 2 have hired responsible union contractors. Es una vergüenza que Southwex, una aerolínea en Terminal 2, perdón, en Terminal 1, con muchas ganancias, ha beneficiado con una renta muy baja por tanto tiempo, y Southwex sigue dejando cientos de trabajadores con trabajos de no unión y con sueldos de pobreza y sin seguro médico. I think it is a shame that an airline in Terminal 1, like Southwest, with big profits, has benefited from lower rents while keeping hundreds of its contracted service workers in non-union, low-wage, no-benefit jobs. SEIU Local 1877 apoya la comisión del aeropuerto y al agua.
y al agua, en asegurando que Southwest y las otras aerolíneas paguen lo justo y lo razonable.
SEIU supports LAWA and the Board of Airport Commissioners in holding Southwest and other airlines to fair and reasonable standards.
Aparte de la cuestión del aumento de renta, SEIU Local 1877 espera trabajar con la ciudad para asegurar que las aerolíneas como Southwest mejoren los estándares en el aeropuerto para que más de 3,500 trabajadores subcontratados, la mayoría son afroamericanos, que viven en las comunidades más pobres de Los Ángeles. Estos trabajadores de no unión reportan sueldos bajos, no seguro médico, y falta de entrenamiento. Todos sabemos que una inversión en entrenamiento y trabajo de calidad resulta una mejor seguridad y servicio para los pasajeros en LAX. Gracias por su tiempo.
Apart from the issue of fee hikes, SEIU 1877 hopes to work with the city to ensure that airlines like Southwest improve standards for over 3,500 subcontracted service workers. The vast majority of these workers are African-American and live in LA's poorest communities. These non-union workers report low wages, no health care, and insufficient training. We all know that an investment in training and quality jobs yields quality, security, and service for the traveling public at LAX. Thank you.
Thank you, and apologies, we're halfway through. This is actually item number 23 in the council, but we, you put in a public comment card. I'd like to go to the two public comment cards in the valley, Matt Dowd and Dr. Mike.
Yes, thank you very much. Been a nice wait, and I'd like to get $1 million too for my wait. Going to court next week. Dean Pregerson, he's quoted last year's Carol Sobel case. Bill Rosendale, if you're listening, he's tied us in with last year's case that you didn't settle and you didn't fix. We've got a letter from the mayor to Michael Hunt, and let me quote, "Unfortunately, I am unable to accommodate your request for a meeting due to scheduling conflicts." But we didn't even give him a schedule. See, the mayor, the mayor is like, he, we talk about transparency, and I touched on it the other day, and now we see we really do need it in LAPD because they're conducting their secret meetings, and they're, they're going over the head of the Police Commission, and I know the Police Commission are probably going to have the last laugh on that one. But getting back to the mayor, he's, he's, he's running us through the court system, wants to go all the way to the Supreme Court now over this unconstitutional AB 1381 school takeover, but let me tell you kiddies at school, this is what he's really teaching you, is that if you don't get your way, just go to court and keep fighting and fighting, even if it's unconstitutional against the United States of America and the California So it is a waste of money, and he's not the only one, too. We've got Bernard Parks fighting the Wallace case, you know, we've got, we've got Jan Perry fighting over the homeless, appealing the sleeping on the street case. Janice Hahn's about to lose her living wage thing, you know, I could go on, Tony Cardenas trying to hijack the bond process, you know, we're wasting so much money with the elections coming up. I just hope the public's watching.
Dr. Mike. Next speaker?
Thank you. Back on the record. Tess, one, two. I think we have an audio problem here in Van Nuys.
We can hear you fine.
Okay, you guys can. I say to you, my friends, you know, and I know the difficulties of tomorrow, I too have a dream that my First Amendment and my civil rights will not be violated as well. I touched on this issue because I've been arrested 25 times for my First Amendment. And I'd like to just do a pause to Dr. Martin Luther King from the Oregon, and it tells you why I have a dream, and it's not over. It's a lot of people that don't understand what's going on, but when you have your civil rights violated in 2007, in 2006, 2005, I just quite don't understand why we're voting on something that we've been chastised about in 1997, 2005, and now 2006. I hope it comes to an end so that the 45 African-Americans can get back to work to feed their families on the beach, and that this ordinance doesn't discriminate or genocide against one group of people like it was targeted for the African-Americans. And we said before this ordinance even went into place at the community meeting, I spoke to Bill Rosenthal, and I said, "This is not a good one, and you'll see why Tuesday." But out of respect, he still signed the bill, and Mr. Labonge followed and co-signed it with him, so I'm really holding you two responsible for violating my civil rights, my First Amendment rights, and my 14th Amendment right, and I will be back on Tuesday just to explain why. See you in two and two. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you. Public comment period has now been closed. Mr. Labonge?
On those matters in the special item agenda, could we vote to reconsider? Ask the CAO to sit at this table right here?
Those are items?
Twenty and 21.
Twenty and 21, okay. We'll vote to reconsider. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this matter was in committee. We had a hearing. We did make a recommendation. It has been reviewed. My questions have been answered, and I ask that we support the CAO's report on this matter. Okay, anyone else want to speak?
Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Okay, I'm, thank you. Next item, item number one.
Both items.
Item number one for a speaker card, Dr. Mike.
Uh, we're lighting in Van Nuys.
Out in the Van Nuys area?
What is number one?
What is it?
Please, go ahead.
Lighting?
Item number one.
Okay, is this the lighting proposal?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm going to approve this one, and I'm not wasting any time, and just go ahead and say we need a yes vote on this.
Madam Clerk, we can open the roll?
Madam President, the action on that one is just to open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinance to February 2nd.
Okay, be held to February 2nd. Our next item is number 23, I think we're going to go to next.
Okay.
Mr. Rosendale?
Madam President, and I want to thank my colleagues who I know are on a very tight schedule for staying here in the chambers and so that we can keep the quorum of 10 for what I consider to be a very important informational discussion on action that the Airport Commission took most recently. If I could ask the city attorney to explain a little bit the procedure with this rule right now.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. Before counsel on item 23 is consideration of your motion whether to assert jurisdiction over the Board of Airport Commissioners' action. Today is the last day, and in order to make an informed decision whether to assert jurisdiction, counsel can inquire as to certain background facts regarding the decision.
Thank you very much for that, and if I could ask the?
Mr. Rosendale, we, just so you know, there was no public hearing, so we would be required to have a public hearing as well on this item, and we do have cards. So you want to have those?
Indeed, what I'd like to do, Madam President, with, with, obviously, concurrence with the council, is I would like the city's department and commission to discuss what they did. I'd like to give the airlines an opportunity to respond, and then for the staff and commission to make a final comment. The whole process could take about 20 minutes, maybe we could have about six or seven minutes of a presentation, let the airline speak, and then have a wrap-up, and then I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Thank you. You want to go ahead then?
Could I ask you all to come up, introduce yourselves, and tell us what action you took that is before us, if we wanted to be before us, obviously, based on your comments and your presentations? Many of my colleagues have come to me and said, "What was this action taken by the commission? What does this all mean?" So it makes sense for us, the city council, to obviously have a better appreciation of the action that you took, and if you could introduce yourselves and, and state the case.
I'm Walter Zifkin, and I'm an airport commissioner.
Patricia Tubert, Deputy Executive Director.
Sam Samenges, Assistant Executive Director.
And I might say that Janice Hahn and I put this motion in, and Janice Hahn could not be here this morning because Mario Danello, who was the 22-year-old USC football player from San Pedro, whose funeral is this morning, so she, as chair of the committee, also took a deep interest in this as well.
So, thank you very much, Councilman Rosendale, President Grohl, members of the chamber of the council. I thought what we would do is briefly present the action of the commission, and following me, Ms. Tubert would give a little bit of what the staff work was that led to this. We welcome the opportunity to discuss this important issue of airline rates and charges that came before the commission. And first of all, I want to emphasize that no one seeks an adversary relationship with the airlines. They're our partners, and airlines need an airport, and an airport needs airlines. So we recognize that, but it takes two sides to make for a good partnership, and we feel the airlines have not been as forthcoming as they should have been with respect to this issue. A brief summary of the background on this is as follows. In Terminal 1, the airline leases expired in August 2004. In Terminal 3, leases expired in May of 2001. There has been negotiations ongoing with respect to those rents on those terminals during this entire period of time. While these negotiations have been ongoing, the low rent rates that have been, were in In addition, those, these old leases do not give the airport the kind of gate control that we need so that airlines that underutilize their gates, we cannot recapture to make the appropriate use of for the airlines that need gates at LAX. The maintenance and operations formula for recapture of the cost of maintaining terminals under these leases was an old and out-of-date formula, which also needs updating. The result of what we exist with today is that the cost per plane passenger at LAX is very, very low, and even with the full imposition of the rents that we have suggested, that we have imposed by commission action, LAX would still not be among the top 10 costliest airports in the country. We need to improve the rates to have the kind of airport we all want to have and that we don't currently have. In addition to the negotiations that have been ongoing for all this time, there was mediation, which was unsuccessful. The commission had this item calendar twice and deferred action twice in order to give the parties additional time to reach a settlement, and during the discussion of the deferral of this item twice, told the airlines that the time had come where we must reach agreement with them, and we were unable to, staff wasn't able to. So the third time this came before the commission, the commission felt that the airlines have an economic interest in delay, and that we needed to end the delay, and so the commission unanimously imposed the rates. When we imposed those rates, we stated that even with the passage of the new rates, we were open to there being further negotiations between the airlines and the staff, and we would be open to reviewing an agreement if one could be reached. We did not take this action lightly, as I think you can see. We feel it is absolutely necessary in the best interest of the city and of the airport to have these rates or have the airlines and our staff now get together with these rates coming February 1st and reach a resolution. We think any further delay would only be further delay. Thank you very much.
And could we know a little more of the facts, please?
Yes, thank you, council member. The board took several actions, as you see, there's, there's quite a few actions, I believe four or five, but they basically break down into two items. One is the MNO, that's maintenance and operation costs attributable to the terminals for all airlines for the year 2006, and the others are combined are the rates for Terminals 1 and 3, and portions of Terminal 6, and new leases at Terminals 1, 3, and 6. And these new leases are the standard leases that we want to use from now on. They're five-year leases. Besides the economic portions of the lease, they do give us the authority to control the space at the various terminals, which we haven't had in the past. They also charge fair market value for the land that's actually being occupied by the carrier and for all the real estate that's being occupied. Under the current holdover lease situation, for example, the airlines are charged for the ticket counters but not for the queuing area in front of the ticket counters, and they're not charged for any percentage of the common area maintenance. So these new leases are what you are used to seeing in a commercial setting, where you pay for the space you use plus your fair share of the common area expenses. The leases, of course, cannot be imposed, leases have to be entered into by, by two sides. If the airlines refuse to sign these leases, or if we cannot continue negotiations and reach a settlement, then we will impose these as a tariff, that is, that they will be able to continue to use the terminals, but their use will be subject to these rates and the conditions that are set forth in the leases. There is a major reason for our wanting to do this, that of course Commissioner Zifkin mentioned, that we want control of our airlines, of our airport, excuse me. We want to have a revenue stream that allows us to maintain the airport in a first-class condition, and I'm sorry to say that we're not there now, but we will be when that revenue stream starts coming in. And I'm not talking about new projects, I'm talking about maintaining, refurbishing, having a first-class facility at a first-class city.
Anything to add, Sampson?
Except to say, I'd like to underscore what Commissioner Zifkin had said, that the charges and what we're suggesting are fair and reasonable, and even with full imposition of the rates and the new lease, our cost structure will remain competitive.
The MNO business, when was the last time we, we visited the MNO issue in this city?
Airport-wide, it's reviewed annually, but there's been negotiations going back to 2002, after the, obviously after 9/11, we had tremendous security increases, and so we've been trying to negotiate with the airlines over charging them for security, which we had not in the past, even though we've always talked about full-cost recovery, we haven't in the past charged full-cost recovery.
And our MNO fees, how do they compare with New York, and Chicago, and Atlanta, and Dallas, and the other major airports in our country?
As Sampson mentioned, and the commissioner mentioned, even at full implementation, that is, no phasing, starting on day one, we would still be at below or at the bottom of the top 10 airlines, airports in, in the country. You mentioned JFK, depending on the terminal, their cost per plane passenger is $12 to $60, six, zero. Miami, 21, San Francisco, 15. Ours would max out, again, it depends on the terminal, how many passengers you have, but it's a general statement, at $12. I would point out that Ontario is 1050. So right now, at $6, which is where we are, we are less than what is being charged at Ontario.
Let me, let me underscore that. Six dollars, current cost per plane passenger at LAX.
And we've heard as much as $60 at JFK?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. What I'd like to do, Madam President, if it's okay, is open up the public hearing and ask the? and ask the airlines to come on up and line up.
Well, we do have other, we have other speakers other than the airlines that are here, if that's okay.
Yeah, if I could have the airlines come first.
Okay, thank you.
Just from that standpoint, and if you could rattle off their names, and I'd like to get you all up here and one by one quickly speak about your positioning on this issue. And I've asked the Commission and staff to turn their chairs around so we can all look at each other. And Madam President.
Great. I have Dan Hagan, Lori Peters, Dawn Arvenek, Dan Dogendorf, these are the airlines specifically, Melinda Franklin, Jose Luis Sanchez, and Paul Lombard, or Lambert. And then we'll follow with the remaining public comment.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. Madam President and members, I'm Dan Hagan with American Airlines. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to talk about what we think is a very important issue. Whether or number of us to speak, and I know we're trying to be expeditious with our time, so I'm going to talk about some of what I would have said, but try to address a couple of things, and the people that follow, I'm sure, will address others. But I think it is important to let you know that American and all these carriers stand ready to work with LAWA, with the city, to accomplish the important goals of modernization and making this airport as efficient and as cost-effective as it can be, and to serve the people in this community appropriately. But the thing I have to address right away is this question of cost. Cost per plane passenger is the typical way this is measured. Airports around the country do not typically raise or lower their costs to meet some sort of average. Costs reflect what is required to cover the expenses incurred by the airport. The reason this airport is less expensive than other comparable airports is that it has not had a major capital program in over 20 years. When modernization takes place, when master plan projects come online, there's no question the cost will go up for this airport, and believe me, we'll be paying our fair share probably more than our fair share. Today, the carriers here are the source for about 70% of the revenue at LAX. That compares to around the country, roughly 50%. So, we are not, quote-unquote, "not paying our fair share." The last quick thing I want to say is, so that everyone can understand the MNO issue, which is the one the long-term leaseholders are focused upon, is the methodology that has been used has been in effect for some, well, in excess of 15 years. It is reviewed annually, and in fact, in the past four years, our costs have increased by some 74% just to the MNO rents themselves. So, it's not as if that is an excuse not to pay more.
Thank you.
I'll stop there, and I'll let others speak.
Lori Peters.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak as well. My name is Lori Peters. I'm the Regional Manager for Corporate Real Estate for United Airlines. I've been in the airline industry for over 20 years, and within that, also spent three years as the Deputy Executive Director for Finance at John Wayne Airport. I'm here today to reflect not just the view of United Airlines, but also those of my colleagues. I want to reiterate what Dan said. United Airlines and our colleagues are very interested in participating in both maintaining and modernizing the facility. Our CEO, Glenn Tilton, has met with the mayor on two separate occasions and has reiterated this as well. The doubling of MNO rents and the change in methodology has supported, has been supported by LAWA or justified by LAWA on the basis of cash. The detail surrounding the need for cash has not been clearly denoted to the carriers in this negotiating process. Clearly, and I'll illustrate this in a little bit, we have had detail to reflect what the actual costs for maintenance and operating the airport are. But what we're talking about here is LAWA is proposing a change in the methodology that has been standard and accepted by the carriers for over 15 years and reflected in our lease agreements. That notwithstanding, the air carriers make it part of our business to partner with the airport, to maintain facilities and to modernize them, and to embark on CIP programs or capital improvement programs, and we do that by defining the program and defining the plan of finance for those. If I can step back, let me just characterize for a second the contrast that we've had with Los Angeles as compared to other airports. In the spring of last year, LAWA presented an Excel spreadsheet, literally what I have in my hands, that denotes the previous year's costs and allocates them to the different cost centers, including the terminal, which the airlines pay for, if I can have just a couple more minutes.
I'm sorry, we can't change those rules, unfortunately.
Okay.
If you have some stuff to submit, though, we'd be happy to look at that if you have some testimony.
I'll do that. And I contrast that to the other airports funding programs here, San Francisco, Denver, O'Hare, and the rest, that are here and here.
Thank you.
And there's a sharp contrast between this and these programs in detailing the reasons behind and the forecast behind the funding programs.
Thank you.
We're just asking for an opportunity to see the detail.
Appreciate that. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Dawn Arnavick. I'm the chairperson of Lax 2 Corporation, and I've flown in from Minnesota today to represent Northwest Airlines, Air Canada, and Hawaiian, the three members of Lax 2 Corporation, and the other 12 airlines serving Terminal 2. As you've heard today, the Board has increased the airline's cost over $45 million, doubling our current MNO charges. LAWA is also changing the rates and charges methodology, and as a result, our costs are going to increase exponentially over the remaining terms of our lease, at a time when the financial state of the airline industry is still very unstable and trying to recover. You've also heard from staff that LAX is a low-cost airport and that airlines have not been paying their fair share. We, the airline industry, already cover 70% of LAWA's operating expenses at LA. With this increase in MNO, the passenger and cargo airlines will be covering over 80% of LAX's operating expenses. The industry average is around 50. Industry data indicates that LAX is currently around $6 per passenger. The industry average for large hubs is $9 per passenger. What is not factored into the LA number is the cost that the long-term carriers are paying for improvements they've made with their own dollars and for operating and management expenses that we pay with our own dollars. For example, at T2, we've spent an additional $7 million in the last few years with upgrades. An additional $2 per passenger should be added to that LA number, putting us at $8. With this MNO increase, we're going to be at $10, and as Patty mentioned earlier, $12 ultimately. It must be noted that the higher-cost airports that LAWA compares themselves to have already completed major capital improvement programs. Comparing LAX to other airports using a cost per plane is not accurate at LA. Our costs are high compared to what we are receiving. Other airports reflect our true cost of improvements made. When you factor in all the true costs at LAX, they are still substantially above other comparable airports, and it will get worse as the modernization is completed without an agreed-to and well-thought-out financial plan. In the past six years I've been involved with LA, I've never seen the business relationship to this point. We'd like to work with them with a finance plan and the capital plan to come to agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is, Dan Dogendorf?
Thank you, and good afternoon. My name is Dan Dogendorf. I'm Managing Director, Continental Airlines International State Affairs. Continental naturally supports the modernization of LAX and working with LAWA on a long-term funding plan. But LAWA's plan to double MNO rent without the corresponding capital improvement plan in place would clearly be outside the context and methodology of our lease agreements, would severely undermine meaningful progress on the modernization of LAX, the kind of projects that through cooperative spirit Continental and the other airlines represented here have successfully completed with airport management in other cities that we serve. Continental has cooperatively worked with our hub airports to implement very significant and successful capital improvement plans, like our Terminal D project at Cleveland, our Terminal C3 complex in Newark, and our Terminal E facility, Bush Intercontinental Airport in Houston. Additionally, we have worked with many other communities we serve in design development, funding, and implementation of large-scale capital improvement plans. These airports and their communities are already enjoying the economic vitality that has come through collective planning and then successful implementation. Those projects are successful because of cooperation and the communication among all parties at every step. As mentioned by my previous colleagues, recognizing that over two decades, LAX has had limited major capital projects implemented, coupled with the fact that most of the significant improvements that have been made by the long-term carriers have been implemented largely with their own funding, then how could any LAWA cost comparison versus other airports be a credible measure of relative cost of operating at LAX? Just like the other long-term leases, Continental invested millions of dollars into Terminal 6. The payments on those investments are not captured in any LAWA average per-passenger cost comparison versus any other airport. We respectfully request that each of the Councilmembers present today. Vote in favor of Rule 245 to give everyone a chance to talk about this further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Melinda Franklin.
Good afternoon. My name is Melinda Yee Franklin. I am the Director of Government and Public Affairs for United Airlines in the Western States. I'm here on behalf of the Air Transport Association of America, based in Washington, DC. ATA is the principal trade association for the US airline industry, and most if not all of its members, including my airline, serve LAX. The airlines have a long history of working with both the airport staff and the city to grow LAX, and in turn, fuel the greater Los Angeles economy. The highly-charged dispute of the early and mid-'90s over landing fee increases clouds but does not erase that longstanding relationship. It was a difficult time that distracted all of us from the business at hand, working together to make LAX a world-class airport, to match its preeminent position as an international gateway for passenger and cargo traffic. We thought all that was behind us, that the airport staff and the Board of Airport Commissioners had come to understand the importance of partnership and cooperation, as we worked together in 2003 to 2005 to address the challenges of the master plan to revitalize LAX. That is why the airlines were surprised by LAWA's apparent unwillingness to truly negotiate over terminal rents and MNO cost formulas. We understand LAWA's desire to capture additional revenues and recognize that certain costs, such as security, have in fact increased. Our members remain willing to negotiate over these items, but meaningful negotiation requires a level of transparency and documentation that has been missing. LAWA has not been forthcoming with the data and detail needed to justify the increases that it demanded and which the Board approved. It is not enough to say without adequate support that more revenue is needed, particularly when LAX continues to maintain a healthy surplus. Unfortunately, LAWA refused to open its books and engage in meaningful dialogue and negotiation. Finally, it should not be overlooked that the US airline industry, particularly the passenger sector, is just beginning to return to financial stability and profitability. We hope that we can work with LAWA, as we do with other airlines, airports, to make things better for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jose Luis Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members. Thank you for this opportunity to be here. My name is Jose Luis Sanchez, Director of Governmental Affairs for Southwest Airlines. Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl, for this motion today. As you may know, Southwest Airlines is the largest intrastate carrier in the state and has a regional presence with five, with service to five local airports. Also, we have one of the highest unionized workforces in the industry. We were very concerned when the Board of Airport Commissioners voted to nearly quadruple the rents at Terminals 1 and 3. Because these increases in new rate-setting methodologies would be applied only to Terminals 1 and 3, Southwest would be put at a significant competitive disadvantage. It is unreasonable and discriminatory. We differ in this situation from the previous speakers. The low fare carriers in Terminals 1 and 3 are disproportionately impacted by this rate-setting methodology. Southwest Airlines does not believe that LAWA or the Board of Airport Commissioners should be picking winners and losers in local air travel. If you do, your constituents, the traveling public in Los Angeles, will be the ultimate losers. The increase, the increases jeopardize low fares and travel options. The airlines have been willing to meet with LAWA staff and offered a significant compromise proposal. And Councilman Rosendahl, thank you for brokering the meeting last week between the parties. We think that a business deal that brings more money to LAWA without unfairly imposing a new rate-setting framework is still a possibility, and we need counsel. We need you to help us ensure that LAWA treats airlines like partners and not adversaries. We need to be at the table when decisions impacting our costs are made. If this fight continues at DOT and in the courts, all of us will suffer. We urge your adoption of the motion, and thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Our next speaker is Paul Lambert.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm the Vice President of Corporate Real Estate for US Airways, which is the largest low-cost carrier. We serve all of the major airports in the Los Angeles region. We feel that if we're going to make LAX a better place, which is what we obviously want, we need to work as a partnership here. And we don't feel that this precipitous action by the Council is in that spirit. What we're looking at here is over, almost 400% rate increase, and we don't think that this is the way for a partnership to reach a solution as to what the appropriate cost should be. Terminal 1 and Terminal 3 are unique situations. By taking this action, what's happened is the 60-day clock has started ticking, during which we need to file an action with the US DOT. If we do end up in litigation, it's going to be, I think, very damaging to our relationship, and I think hurt the long-term prospects for working as a partnership to solve all the problems. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Carolina Briones.
Thank you very much. I am Carolina Briones. I'm with the LA Alliance for a New Economy, and I'm speaking on this item today because we believe that Southwest Airlines in particular should pay its fair share to the city, both in the form of terminal rents and also in the form of good jobs with fair wages and healthcare benefits. As you know, the airport is a major economic engine in the region. Over the last decade, we have made major improvements in job quality at the airport. Even so, there are still thousands of airport jobs that pay low wages, do not provide healthcare benefits, and other benefits. This is because the airlines cut costs by using subcontractors in a race to the bottom that affects job quality, it affects security, and it affects service quality at the airport. Southwest in particular has a track record of using passenger service contractors that pay low wages and do not provide affordable healthcare benefits to their employees. In contrast, there are responsible airline janitorial contractors at LAX that provide a total compensation to their employees that's above the city's living wage level, and they also provide free, full-family health benefits. We're calling on Southwest today to invest in Los Angeles by paying a reasonable increase in terminal rates, and also invest in the city by using responsible contractors that pay fair wages and provide healthcare and adequate training to their employees. Many airport workers live in the communities surrounding the airport, which are some of the most impoverished and crime-ridden in the entire city. Providing good-quality airport jobs can lift families out of poverty while also improving security and service quality at the airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Briones. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd, out in Van Nuys.
Yeah, thank you very much. Nice to be out in the, out in the ZoomaDog chambers, we're going to call these. He's leasing them for me to comment on this today. But what I want to talk about on this item is about the public perception, especially with the way it's written in the agenda. I was, I was online looking at the way this is written in the agenda, and this is just a public comment. I went onto the Mayor Sam blog space, and I saw an article by ZoomaDog about this, and he, I think he, he saw the, well, it's ambiguous because it looks like, it looks like very large increases, but in fact, it's really the very large terminals. Yeah. Oh, sorry, I've got ZoomaDog in here because he wanted to hear this comment. The way it's written, it's a little ambiguous. It makes it sound like the increases are very large, but if I'm reading it, the way I see it, it looks like it's just the very large terminal is getting the increase. So, I'm not exactly sure either now that I've just mentioned it. I'm starting to confuse myself. So, yeah, we'd just like to know, it just, it looks like it's a very large increase, but it could also be very large terminals only. So, that's just how I'm reading it. Thanks for the opportunity from Van Nuys.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt.
Fix the clock in Van Nuys. I'm reading it as quadrupling the price in Terminal 1 to 3. I think LAWA should be ashamed of themselves. I think that all airlines' terminals should pay a reasonable amount but not quadruple the terminal rate. the, the terminal rate just for LAX. The Commissioners should be overseeing that, along with Bill Rosenthal. And I think that the prices and everything should come down so that the airlines can survive and provide jobs and everything for the people. What I do want to see is all the airlines paying their people reasonable and wage, and cost of living wages so that they can survive and their families, but also in the intent of quadrupling anybody's terminal is, that's just, that's just abuse of any, any, any airport. You know, I can understand 7% raise, you know, in the next two to three years, you know, every year, but quadrupling all at one time. That shouldn't be happening here in LA. And to all the airlines, you guys should want to work with LAWA to make these things happen, to where everything is fair and reasonable, not over, overextended, like quadrupling the terminals for 1 and 3. LAX is a very, very important source to Los Angeles, and it actually makes the economy go around, so you guys work it out together. I want to see, I want to see the airlines pay their reasonable share, and I also want to see LAWA be reasonable and not quadruple anybody's prices. So work it out. I'll see you guys next week. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
All right. Mr. Rosendahl, that closes our public hearing.
I want to thank the airlines and Lamp for coming here today. I know the airlines had very little notice on this, and we wanted to get, get it all on the record as to where things are. And I'd like to ask our city staff and Commission to respond to what they just heard from the airlines, if they could, within the context of this motion.
I'm sure Ms. Tubert will have some specific responses, but I would like to address just two or three of the points that were raised. One is, in terms of raising costs for infrastructure, today we have an outdated airport. Today, the water system, the electrical system, the sewage system at the airport needs improvement. Today, we are working on a new south runway. Today, we are embarking on Tibbet. Today, we are embarking on an inline baggage system.
And Tibbet is the Tom Bradley Terminal, which is a good half a billion dollars' worth of investment.
At least, right. And the airlines will pay for that improvement in Tibbet over an extended period of time. Meanwhile, the airport has to front the cost. And we need, in order to do that job, we need to show cash flow to pay for it in part out of our own funds, and then to be able to justify borrowing funds from banks. Our current cash flow, the current income, will not support this without these increases. That's point one. Point two is the M&amp;O charges. You heard the airlines say, "The formula's been in existence for 15 years." Great. That formula did not recover full security charges. That formula did not recover other charges that go with maintenance of the terminals. Now, some of the airlines have long-term leases, and their legal position is, under those leases, you're stuck with that formula. The Commission has been advised by eminent counsel, including outside counsel, that under the leases, we have a right to change the formula on M&amp;O charges. And we need to. We need to. The last point I want to make is discrimination. So we have leases that are up in Terminals 1 and 3. We have leases that are not up and that have 20 years to run in some of the other It is mind-boggling to think that we could not raise rents on any terminal until the leases on all terminals expire 20 years from now. So this is not discriminatory, because each and every lease that does come up is going to be treated the same when it comes up. These happen to be the first leases that are up. My last point is, the largeness of the increase speaks to the lowness of the rates, and also during the course of negotiations, and I mention this because it's been made public already, normally I would not speak about what goes on in terms of trying to resolve a dispute, but the staff offered an eight-year phase-in of these charges, backloaded so that the early years would see less of that increase than the later years. So.
Thank you. Is there any other comments, please?
If I could, I know that we can't get into the merits, but I, I think that it's important to understand, clarify a couple of issues that were made. One is the fact that we are not collecting money for money's sake. We're not, by federal law, allowed to collect more than our cost, and that's exactly what we're collecting. I believe the representative from ATA is mistaken. We have had over 96 meetings going back to 2002 with the airlines. We have opened up our books to them completely. They have hired an auditor to come and take a look at those books. I have still not heard any argument that we haven't spent this money, only that they do not want to pay for it. We are extremely transparent. The airlines at LAX have an association that meets quarterly. They also have subcommittees that meet on a regular basis. We have met with them at each of those meetings. We have showed them what plans we have, not only our current capital improvement projects, but those capital improvement projects that we'd like to do, but we don't have the cash flow to do them yet. We have tried as, as much as we can to work with them, and as Commissioner Ziffkin said at the beginning, we will continue to negotiate. If we reach an agreement, we will go back to the Board and ask the Board to modify their action. But at some point, you have to stop negotiating, and you have to start improving your airport.
Any other further comments? Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing this discussion to take place. And legally, what I'd like to be able to do at this point, if I can, as city attorney, is withdraw that motion and make a substitute motion. Can we do that?
What would the substitute motion be?
Would be to note and file.
Okay. You can, you could just, I believe, note and file this matter. Would it require, Madam Clerk, any substitute motion?
No, actually, a substitute motion is not required. It would be just to receive and file the motion.
Yes. It would be to receive and file the motion.
All right. That is before us. Mr. Labonge is next on the queue, and then we'll take that up.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Very much, Mr. President. Mr. Rosendahl knows I listened to the discussion on this issue here. I just want to know, is there anything that shows what Denver does, what Houston does? I don't have a report here that I think would help me make a little better judgment on that issue, because I think it's, you know, I remember this on and on, and I know the, my predecessors, the one who this chamber's named after John Farrow, was very familiar with these issues of landing fees and what it means to it. You know, I want to modernize LAX. And Mr. Rosendahl, on this issue here, you mentioned Tom Bradley, I believe, and the Tibbet, as you use it. I like to say Tom Bradley, you know, instead of, you know, on that issue there. But I thank you very much, Ms. Tubert. But at the same time, too, there's no new gates going in, right? Is that right, Mr. Rosendahl?
There is the 380 for the big Airbus, if it ever comes, you know, or some of these other big planes. They've redone a couple of the gates. We're not going to have more gates. No additional gates.
I understand that. But I mean, see, I just want to argue that we're here in this city 225 years from, they came from the great mission, San Gabriel, to the banks of the river, to water, and they said, "Let's build a great harbor," and 47% of the growth of commerce comes through that harbor. And then this is the number three airport in the United States, number five in the world. Is that correct?
Five.
You know, this is the second-largest country, second-largest city in the country, and the eighth in the world. I just think, you know, if you make decisions now, we don't want to fool ourselves to allow people to modernize the facility so that people can come in safely and out. I do believe, I'd like to look at that as I work with you and the Airport Commission, because I don't want to fool it. But on these issues of these fees here, if they look at that here, where Los Angeles is on that, and you want to receive and file this at this time, so I understand what that is about there. But I would hope that the Commission and staff work closely with the airport industry and have ongoing dialogue. I mean, I think what made this city great is the water that came here, and then, and then the port, and then the airport, is how it grew. We are a metropolitan area, and I don't want to see us treat us like we're just taking a hard line on these issues here. So I'd appreciate that as well in the ongoing discussions. I thank you, Ms. Tubert, as well as the staff and the Commission President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. There's no other speakers from the council. We have the motion before us. Mr. Parks?
Clarity, what in essence does the receiving file do? I mean, we're not asking for it to be 245?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Okay. That is passed. That will be received and filed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 12, and that was called Special Four Cards from the Public.
Mr. Dowd? Item number 12 in Van Nuys. Mr. Matt Dowd is our speaker. Okay. We've been told that the speaker is not there, so we will close public comment on number 12. Any council members wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
And, Mr. President, that is an ordinance, and it will go over for one week.
All right. That will go to a second reading, since we do not have 12 members. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused the second, third, and fourth Wednesdays to leave at 1:00 PM, and that would be for the entire year, and those meet council policy.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas also requests to be excused Wednesday, January 31st, to leave at 1:00 for personal business. That meets council policy.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas is excused.
And also on February 9th for city business, and March 30th, Tuesday, April 3rd, and the 4th for personal business, and those all meet council policy.
Those excuses are granted as well.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused January 23rd and 24th to leave at 12:30, March 2nd and 6th for the entire meeting, and June 15th and 19th for the entire meeting. A motion is required on January 24th.
All right. Let's wait on that one, then. And the other ones are granted. Actually, I'm sorry. Ms. Perry moves on that one. This is a cruel second. If there's no objection, we'll do the earlier one, too.
Okay. And also, request for personal business February 9th and June 1st.
Okay. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Wednesday, January 17th for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay. That excuse is granted as well.
And Councilmember Labonge requests to be excused Friday, January 19th for city business. A motion is required.
Okay. That takes us to 11 or to 10 on that day?
It takes council to, actually, 11.
Okay.
Because there's a council member arriving late and coming in, leaving early, so those balance out.
Okay. Mr. Weisar moves. Mr. Smith, seconds. If there's no objection, that excuse will be granted.
And that clears the desk.
All right. Announcements, colleagues? Any announcements? Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am extremely concerned about cold weather that is forecast for this weekend. Many of the homeless individuals in our city stay outdoors and resist shelter services. The extreme cold in some of the areas of our city, particularly as you get closer to the water, may cause people who are homeless to start warming fires that can be very dangerous. Temperatures at or below freezing can cause a person to die out there on the street. Now, in cities like Chicago, Boston, and New York, homeless people are not given a choice in extreme weather. They are forced into services, but that's not what we do here. In extreme weather conditions, we should be doing everything we can to encourage people to go to places where it is warm. I have asked the missions in downtown to add capacity for the next few nights in their day rooms and their cafeterias. In Skid Row, we can get the word out, but for many of the council members that do not have shelter services in your council districts, you may want to speak to your police department captains and fire department personnel so they can watch for people and direct and even transport people to emergency services for this weekend. I've also spoken to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority about outreach and adding capacity, getting the word out, not just to the city of Los Angeles, but to the county as well. And I think each one of you by now has a copy of the winter shelter program locations for each of your offices so that you know where the services are located. And we have asked Channel 35 to post contact information for the winter shelter hotline, which is 1-800-548-6047.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl.
I have just a comment on what Ms. Perry said, and again, I want to thank you for your leadership on this issue. When I got up this morning, I had already put my potted plants indoors last night because I was worried about the frost, and tonight, it will get very cold. And the first thing you must think of are the homeless. We don't have enough shelters in cold weather, and we don't have, obviously, enough permanent housing with supportive services. It just outlines the criticalness of the issue here in Los Angeles, and I'm very proud of your leadership on it, but it is a big issue, and we have not come up with all of the locations for these shelters throughout our city, and we need to do more. And I appreciate it being highlighted.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Labonge?
Weekend, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you, too. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Tomorrow, I'd just like to announce that the Black College Expo is at the Convention Center, starts at 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM in South Hall. Also, we mentioned it earlier, but just to remind the public that the MLK Parade is Monday, the 15th. After that parade, there will be a festival in Lemur Park that's hosted by the 8th District. Parade starts at 10:30. Also, just a reminder that the 8th District Farmers Market in the Vision Theater parking lot is every Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then, an event at our African-American Museum, a masterpiece of African art starts January 13th, Saturday, 7 to 9:00 PM at the California Museum. And then finally, the Pan-African Film Festival is coming again to the 8th District, starts February the 8th through the 19th, and it will be held at the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza, the Magic Johnson's Theater.
I wanted to announce, I know he's not here today because he is away on city business, but yesterday was our colleague Ed Reyes's birthday, so we want to wish Mr. Reyes a very happy birthday, and when we see him on Tuesday, we can do so again publicly, but if you see him, and I know the residents of the 1st District will like to know that as well. Any other announcements? Do we have any adjourning motions today? If I could, please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I move that we adjourn today in honor of Gloria Cornejo, a 78-year-old grandmother from the Elserino community in East Los Angeles. She passed away on December 14th, 2006. Ms. Cornejo was a resident of Lincoln Heights in Elserino for over 42 years. She was an active member of her community, was always present at community events and willing to lend a hand. She was also a proud member of the Comité Navideño, a group whose mission was to help organize the holiday festivities in Elserino. She is survived by her nine children, Josefina, Francisco, Jorge, Carla, Percy, Esteban, Alba, Alberto, and Angel, her 10 grandchildren, and 12 great-grandchildren. She will certainly be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Labonge?
Members, I ask to adjourn in memory of Iwao Takamoto, who recently passed away, 81-years-old. He was a great animator, who created Scooby Doo and many other things, worked for Disney in his early days. Wonderful man, who found inspiration for his career in a place rarely spoke of, Manzanar, when he was relocated during World War II. And he spent much of his time at that time learning his craft, and later did many great things as an artist for Walt Disney, as well as for Hanna-Barbera. He's survived by his wife Barbara, son Michael, and stepdaughter Leslie. Also, on this day, I ask another artist we adjourn in memory of Gary McCorkle, who was one of our longtime calligraphers here in our Creative Services Division of City Clerk. He worked for the city for over 35 years. He's survived by his wife Sandy, daughter Shelley and Cheryl, Sebskun Scott, Brian and David, Anderson, nine grandchildren, and his brother Bert. I ask to adjourn in memory of Gary McCorkle. Also, Pedro Abara recently passed away. His son is an interpretive ranger who is involved with city family here in Griffith Park. We ask to adjourn in memory of Pedro Abara. And finally, Patricia Maria... And finally, Patricia Maria Allega, who is -- her sister is one of the Recreation and Parks writers on our Tournament of Roses Parade. She just recently passed. We ask to adjourn in memory of Patricia Maria Rahala.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask to adjourn in memory of Roberto Reynolds, the sister of Ray Serrana, our Assistant CAO, who plays a very prominent role in our Budget and Finance Committee. Ms. Reynolds died Wednesday, January 3, L.A. County USC Medical Center. She was only 39 years of age. She attended Christian elementary schools and went on to high school in San Gabriel High. She was very active in all aspects of her church ministry from a very young age. As a college student, she volunteered to work with her church youth group and accompanied them as they visited many military bases and state penitentiary to bring a religious message to those who were military families or families of prisoners. She played the piano, loved music, and in power of communication beyond words. She began her teaching career and passed at Deena Christian School and then moved to Temple City Unified School District, where she taught at Oak Avenue and Temple City School. She's survived by her son Dalton, who she also coached in his Little League baseball team. She was in the process of applying to become an instructor and teacher in Azusa Pacific University. The public hearing -- public viewing was held Wednesday, January 10. The funeral was held Thursday, January 11. She's survived by her son, her parents, and her brother Ray.
All members, please. Are there adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Have a great weekend and a happy King Day, everybody. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.